That renders it unbuildable. The lines shown in the elevation clearly shows it's not buildable. And this was identified and determined by King County to be within an area that should not be disturbed at all. It is assigned as a no disturbance area, which has legal statewide and federal ramifications that the city seems to be completely ignoring at this point in time. And I say that out of due respect, but I've been more than patient for five and a half years now. And it's gotten to the point where you are endangering people's lives. The properties below are some of the parcels purchased by shell companies. This intensifies, all of these parcels are being purchased by several shell companies that are interrelated. And these properties somehow have purchased all this area represented by Eastman, several quick claims as one of the entities. So will the city of Sammamish
Fifteen seconds.
At the end, let the land above the same amount of attention to detail as it did with the beach parcel that has recently been damaged. This at a bare minimum. The parcel numbers, why has the city not formally recognized this and the neighboring properties as landslide hazards? This is completely unacceptable.
Your time is up.
Parcels. May I have another minute, please? I know it's against
Mr. Mandela, I apologize.
Five years I've been putting up with this.
I understand.
You guys did not get back to me for weeks. And now my house
Mr. Mandela, I will ask our city manager
Who? I want a name this time. I want a name and I want a call and I want some respect out of this city council.
Mr. Mandela, I will have, I will request again
This will be, I'm gonna have to take this up with federal and state. So have someone get back to me. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I think last time Mr. Mandela made public comment, he did ask and you did say that you would get back to him.
Yeah, that's correct. And my apologies.
Okay. Can you please make sure that you connect with Mr. Mandela on his concerns?
Yes, we will. And we'll try to see, hopefully he's left his phone number and parcel address. I know we've had some similar issues right down there in that area with another property owner who's complained quite a bit. And I think we've got back, but I don't know if there's a relationship there between those property locations and the similar issues. I do apologize for the failure to follow through on that call. I would do that.
Thank you. And if you can circle back with the council just so that we're aware that you've
I shall.
... such base and just kind of any background information there. Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
I will now promote the next caller.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish 21 years. I am prepared a PowerPoint that I just didn't quite get sent before the meeting. I'm gonna email it. There was flooding again on Upper Lewis Thompson Road at 211th Place Southeast where it intersects. The last time I reported this, it had happened January 7th and had emailed on the 18th and February 2nd. And this February 28th, we did get about 2.7 to 3.3 inches of rainfall per the rain gauges that are available. Last time it was about 1.8 or 2.4 inches. So what happened is when you're standing on 210th looking, or if you're like by montage and you're looking uphill, you see a lot of flooding on the road. And I have photos of cars driving by where there's a lot of spray, whether it's the uphill lane or the downhill lane. And the splashing is quite a bit. Like I have a picture of a white van where the splashing is going higher than the roof. And that's only driving through a portion of the water. The rest of it is flooding the road and it goes on to Lewis Thompson. The photos that I did take were on 228. I didn't actually go when it was raining. I went after it had ceased raining. So I know the flows were higher earlier in the day. I just couldn't get out due to other commitments that I have. I've also included school bus drop off photos where there's middle school students that had to get off into the, they had to wait. There was no way to go through it. It went over their shoe tops. I know because to take photos, my sneakers were entirely soaked. And I want you to know that stormwater isn't necessarily clean. So I thought that was an important thing to show. Also, there are multiple school buses that go by per day from Lake Washington. And I also think as across school buses do. And you need to know that sometimes these students are special needs. I have a picture of that from today. It's not in the rain, but it's really important to know that. The Zachuse Basin Plan, the finalized plan, does predict culvert failures, two culvert failures at this location. What happened is because the city didn't clean culverts, the slide happened, the landslide happened. And although the city did a slide repair, the modeling for the Zachuse Basin Plan didn't talk about that. So we do have flooding problems. There are people that say they haven't seen the flooding like this that we've had this year. So there's some things going on and I am gonna send in my photos and I hope that someone will follow up. Also, this is very connected to Zachuse Creek. I took photos of that with the silt and sediment. I don't even think a dorsal fin can get through in there now. And then the last photo I gave is the King County fish culvert and the private one below that, which both look good.
Fifteen seconds.
Follow up on this. And something's gonna need to get done at that intersection because the slide repair just didn't work fully. And it's, this flooding is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I did see you out there this morning as I drove by.
Oh.
And I, and I too have noticed flooding that I have not noted on that road before.
Yeah. And I talked with somebody today that actually has lived there 16 years and he walks every day either with his dogs or by himself. He says he's never seen it before this year either. So I do know it's a lot of rainfall, but if that water doesn't get handled, you could end up with another slide situation further down.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have additional?
Yes, we have two more. I'll promote the next one right now.
Hello, City Council. It's Paul Stickney, Sammamish here. Hey, we just wanna chat about the email I sent in today on the written comments regarding your agenda items on the King County growth target and doing the housing needs assessment for the, you know, Department of Commerce. I wrote these relatively concise and I'm only gonna paraphrase here, then add a little bit as well. My first ask is to strongly consider the forecasted need for internal housing imbalance in the community into the growth target. There are several PDFs attached that support this over time. Second thing is on the housing needs analysis, I'd like to make sure that for the first time, our community take not a deep dive, but do a dive similar to what we do for transportation analysis on roads with four ways of traffic counts for 43 intersections, 23 segments, et cetera, is that we look at about 40 economic groups and about 20 demographic groups and figure out the housing supply versus the housing need for each of those groups up to income levels at 450% AMI with income bands that are roughly 30% wide. Why do I say that? In the 2003 comprehensive plan, we learned that roughly 12 to 15% of the people in our community make over 400% average median income. And back under the 2015 comp plan, I talked to representatives at King County, PSRC and the state and asked if a city was gonna study average median income bands above the 100% median, which many cities stop at, what would be appropriate widths? They all said that they would never tell a city how to do anything like that, but they did tell me between 20 and 40% wide, which is why my PDF number one recommends a width of 30% wide. And given Sammamish has about 90 to 95%, excuse me, that's an exaggeration, about 90% of our households above 100% income
Fifteen seconds.
All those income bands because one category masks all the shortages and even further masks surpluses that are even larger. That's my comment. Any of you that wanna reach out and talk about this, let's have a chat. Let's get the information and get it right. Appreciate the time to speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We have one final phone caller. I'll put them on right now. There we go. Thank you.
Oh, hi, sorry. Hi. My name is a rural merchant and I actually live in the same property as Vince Mandela here in the city of Sammamish. We are the first residents of this home, which was short plotted in 2005, but never actually properly closed out. Part of the reason you guys have heard from me multiple times is because I reached out to Mr. Pyle on multiple occasions, hoping that they would actually close out something that had, that was literally left open. And, and I'm not kidding you, the emails even show that the only thing that you, the city did to close it out was send an vigil up to ask the existing residents if it was, everything looked okay. Nothing was actually done. Freaking amazing to me. But if you look at the emails, actually, that is the primary reason I wanted to bring information was that, one, I fought the waterfront because I want, I thought that it being in the conservancy zone would provide some protection. But that would require it could be changed from our forward zoning. The same problem that you guys are gonna have in calculating what is buildable land are these giant parcels behind us that are incredibly steep incline. The reason that they were considered under all of King County during the time it managed this property as being unbuildable is because of the massive landslide. One of the examples in the attachment site that happens to be the property owned by Dave Capel, which is parcel 202, 506, 9049. That parcel alone shows so much landslide documentation and history. And that is just a portion of the parcels that are then, that had been purchased up by some corporations, if you will, that are all managed under the East, by the Eastmans, including Pungshway 5. I did not realize they also bought that, that company at the time because it had not even been incorporated prior to the court case that they, that they filed. So what is amazing to me is these properties have been listed as unbuildable because, because of the fact that any, any of the plants that are removed will prevent water from being pulled in to the actual land and therefore force it across the subsurface. And that is what creates landslides. That has been noted by King County. It's the reason I also attacked the descriptions, what they considered to be steep folks. This property was prevented from building for these very reasons. And that parcel alone, still 9049, still says there are no delineated studies, period. You guys are also still missing five streams that were recognized in the critical area study for the trail report. How on earth can you lose streams? There's a stream five feet from my house because the builders were not held to the 25 foot setback that was required by the Simpson Marion notice recorded on the land and the building permit because nobody did anything. And right now, I'm also being threatened by landslide right behind our home. This is ridiculous. The fact that I
Fifteen seconds.
... all of this property. And at the same time, I'm not being given any protection and nobody has gotten back to me in two years, regardless of the mayor or the deputy mayor, asking him to contact me? I got all of the reports, just like Christie asked me and he didn't, and it gave me further proof that he did not contact me even once. Not once in the entire time he was required to contact me. And the reason is, is because you guys now have given him ungranted authority to literally ask if he is king of the county. He's not been elected by the people, but he can override every law? So he can now grant every one of these
Ms. Merchant.
Actually, only one builder, but you can grant
Ms. Merchant, I'm sorry. I hate to cut you off. Your time is up. We have to keep this
I totally understand. No, I totally understand.
We are going to have the, we are going to have the city manager follow up with you and Mr. Mandela on this issue and then circle back with council so that we are kept in the loop.
Absolutely.
Mayor, council, I've noted the phone number. That will help me and I will also convene a conversation with David Pyle and we'll get some more information and get back to you after making contact.
Thank you. I do believe she emailed the council this evening. She did. I don't know if you are on there. I will forward that email so that you have that for context as well, Mr. City Manager.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam City Clerk, can you just confirm that we don't have any additional callers?
That is all the callers that we have for tonight.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So that will close public comment for this evening. Next, we will move to executive session. We have pending litigation and potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101i and the evaluation of complaints or charges brought against a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.1F. We do anticipate action. Madam City Attorney, I don't know timeframe on the litigation pieces. Can you help me out just so I can give a timeframe?
Certainly, Mayor Malchow. I would estimate approximate duration of 45 minutes. Council can always extend if more time is needed.
You think that's 45 minutes for those first two items? Is that correct?
Actually, no. For the first two items, I would anticipate, I think it would be fair to say 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay. So you're saying 45 minutes in total for all three? Okay.
That's what I was trying to indicate. Sorry, it wasn't clear.
Perfect. No problem. Just wanted to be clear. Okay. So council, we will reconvene here at 7:45 unless we need to extend, in which case I will alert the clerk that we need to extend. So I'll close out of Zoom and we'll see you on the other side.
Good evening, everyone. The executive session will be extended until 8:00 PM. Again, the executive session will be extended until 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay. I think we've got everybody back. So I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement with Division Nine and Puget Sound Flooring and Designs regarding work performed at the Sammamish Community and Aquatic Center according to the terms recommended by the city's outside legal counsel.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, the motion's passed.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement to resolve the Kimsey litigation, consistent with the terms recommended by the city's outside legal counsel and to take other actions as necessary, consistent with the settlement agreement. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, the motion's passed.
And I move for the city to offer a separation agreement to the city manager for a separation date of March 31st, including severance pay under his contract and an additional consideration of six months salary and benefits, and provide a letter of acknowledgement of accomplishments in exchange for release of claims from the city manager.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, can I raise a hand? I don't think I heard Councilmember Lamb. Can I see the ayes? Can I raise your hand, please? Okay, and the nays? Okay, by a vote of four, two, motion passes. Next is consent calendar. I'd entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Miranda, did you get your resolution on item four?
Yeah, I've got it taken care of.
Great, thank you. All right.
Actually, I wanted to pull one of the items. So I, I move to amend.
Which item? Just which item do you wanna pull?
I wanna pull, dang it, it's the, the maker's CCI. I wanna say it's item six. I don't really have it in front of me right this second.
Six is the housing action plan?
Yep. That's the one.
All right. So we'll check item six under unfinished business after the approval of the King County planning policies. So all those in favor of the consent calendar as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, consent calendar has passed. Next, we have presentations and proclamations. Our first proclamation is Women's History Month. Is there anyone that would like to read that proclamation? Councilmember Lamb, can I ask you to read the proclamation?
Find it. What is that on? Sorry, my iPad's not working so well.
It's okay. I can, I can also read it if no one else has it ever wants to read it.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. All right, I will read it. It's Women's History Month, March 2022. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas, American women, particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institution in our nation. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive and social change movement. Whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas, the city of Sammamish has employed women, many in leadership roles, who are serving the community in impactful and meaningful ways and will honor Women's History Month with content and resource on its diversity, equity, and inclusion page. Whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, I, Christie Malchow, Mayor of the city of Sammamish, on behalf of the Sammamish City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2022 to be Women's History Month in the city of Sammamish. All right, now I have to go back to regular packet here. Next, we have a presentation. This is an update on the artwork presentation, civil liberties, and racial and social justice. And it looks like we have Anjali Meyer and Chris Jordan, Ashley Yankin, and Megan from the Arts Commission who are joining us this evening. Anjali?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council, Mr. City Manager. Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Tonight, we have with us the Chair and Vice Chair of the Arts Commission, who will report out on their progress on the artwork representing civil liberties and racial and social justice. I'll turn it over to Chris Jordan, our Recreation and Cultural Services Manager and Staff Liaison to the Arts Commission.
Let me bring up the PowerPoint real quick. Thank you, Anjali, and good evening, council. My name is Chris Jordan, and is Staff Liaison to the Arts Commission. I want to introduce Ashley, who's Arts Commission Chair, and Megan, who is Arts Commission Vice Chair, who will be handling portions of the presentation. The Commission would like to thank the council for our opportunity to check in with you tonight and look forward to your feedback and direction on this project. Ashley and Megan will be given a brief presentation on artwork representing civil liberties and racial slash social justice, and at the end will be available to answer any questions. This presentation will cover a recap on the timeline of this project and the works Arts Commission has done, then give an update on partnerships and securing additional funds, then overview of developed call of proposals and its few steps, then overview of the possible locations replacement of this artwork, and finally, next steps the council would like to take for this project. Now, I would like to pass this over to the Chair of the Arts Commission, Ashley.
Ashley, are you able to hear us? I think you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, so, good evening. I'm Ashley. I'm the Chair. This project started with council directing the art commission to research artwork ideas that would represent civil liberties and social justice. And over the next few months, we worked on a variety of concepts, involved the community by doing a survey, searched for locations, and figured out possible financials needed for the project. Then the commission presented these items in late 2020 and received feedback and direction from the council. Y'all wanted us to move forward with a permanent structure of children playing together and in general being together. Council also wanted us to explore alternative locations other than Sammamish Commons. And y'all approved a budget of $50,000 and asked us to look into alternative resources for additional funding. Next slide, please, Chris. Over the last year, the Arts Commission, through the pandemic, worked on partnerships to get additional funding. We designed an RFP and narrowed down a list of locations for the artwork. For partnerships, the staff and the commission designed a webpage with detailed information to allow businesses, organization, and individuals to view partnership opportunities. This was promoted through the communication channels throughout the year. Also, the commission developed a list of possible partners to reach out to directly. And then we sent a letter to, to potential organizations to see their interest in partnering on this project. Over the last year, unfortunately, the commission was not able to secure any additional funding for this project. Next slide, please. The staff and commission worked on drafting up a call of proposal for the Sammamish outdoor sculpture. The budget threshold for the proposal will be $50,000, which will need to include design, fabrication, delivery, and possible install. The call for proposal will, would be open for about 60 days, and then there will be a two-stage process for selection. The commission would select the finalists based off experience, artistic style, quality, and submissions. A max of three proposals will be selected to submit a scale model based off their proposed concepts. Then the commission would bring our recommendations out of the finalist with scale models to the council for final approval. The next slide, please. The final step the commission and staff worked on was narrowing down a possible location that this artwork could be placed at. There are four locations that we narrowed it down to. East Sammamish Park by the entryway, then East Sammamish Park along the path of, to Margaret Mead, Big Rock Park North by the entry, by the Earth Play Mounds, and Big Rock Park North entrance. The Arts Commission would recommend the artwork be placed at Big Rock Park North and the specific site and the specific site location at the park entrance. Megan Sela-Trenikoff, our Vice Chair, will go over each site and give you a little bit more background. Megan?
Thanks, Ashley, and thanks, City Council. So our first, oh goodness, we just lost hang, and I'm sorry, I just lost my notes. It shrunk up. So the first location is East Sammamish Park, and the first place we looked at is the part that is circled here in red. It's a very visible place from when you walk into the park, and it would be in the north area of Sammamish. The maximum size that we could place a piece of art here is something that would be 10 feet in diameter. Next slide, please. Our second location that we chose from is in the same park, East Sammamish Park, but this time it would be in the park pathway that leads to Margaret Mead. This is not quite as visible as the first one, but it does get a tremendous amount of foot traffic. The maximum size here would be eight feet in diameter. Next slide. The third location moves us to Big Rock Park North, and here we looked at the Earth and Play Mounds. And this is a visible location from the entrance of the park, and it's next to where a lot of the children play. This artwork, the largest, could be about eight feet in diameter. And next slide. The final location that we chose from and that we investigated was also in Big Rock Park North. And here, we chose the most visible location, which would be right at the entrance of the park. The advantage to this part is that it is a very flat area, and it's easy to, it's easy to install a piece of art here, and it could be seen from most areas from the entrance as a person walks into the park with the maximum size of artwork, artwork of eight feet in diameter. Next slide. What we're looking for now is direction from the City Council. Does the City Council approve the recommended location for the artwork? The place in Big Rock Park North at the entrance that the Art Commission voted unanimously to place? And secondly, does the City Council authorize staff to advertise the call for proposal for artwork that represents civil liberties and racial, social justice? We would, the Art Commissions would evaluate design proposals as listed before from the submissions, and then presenting the finalists to the Council for selection and approval. Now, next slide.
That's the final slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I was thinking it was the thank you. So we do thank you for giving us the time to be able to present to you tonight. We are looking for direction, and we would like to be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much to both of you, Ashley and Megan, for joining us this evening and presenting this. Looks like we have a couple of questions. Councilmember Howe?
I thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful to get that explanation from you. I appreciate your time. A couple of questions has to do around the notion of social justice. Typically, artwork that, that tackles this very topic is generally used to inspire people to change something about their lives potentially, and to accept and to actually model social justice. It may not be a comfortable piece, is what I'm suggesting. Have you considered that?
We did. So before you were, can we, like, when we presented the idea to Council, we had suggested multiple options. And this is the option that Council had selected. So that's what we were moving forward with.
Okay, thank you for that.
Do you have additional questions? Nope, okay. Councilmember Lamb?
Hi, thank you for all your hard work on this. I have quite a few questions and probably the same amount of comments. My first one is related to the title. Civil, it is civil liberties and racial, social justice artwork, and that is going to be the title when you go and get proposals. Those two are pretty, they're, they're, they're two different things. Like, you know, civil liberties is the rights guaranteed in the Constitution. You know, it includes freedom of religion, the right to bear arms, freedom of speech, which is very different than social justice. So I would, I would, I would suggest clarifying that. To me, I think that a more logical title would be something along the lines of honoring diversity, equity, and inclusion, simply because looking at your artwork right now with the children playing, that does represent diversity, equity, inclusion, and there is no mistake. Is this, are we creating art for social justice? Are we creating art for civil liberties? I also think that since we have a D E I statement, it's more, it's a physical manifestation, basically, of a statement that we already have. So that's one suggestion. The other one is, did you guys think about instead of saying that we are asking for people to design around children playing, just to offer up, you know, we are welcoming any ideas. We can provide ideas such as children playing or other ideas, but to let the people sending in the RFPs come up with their own ideas. Was there?
That is the plan. So I think what we decided as a commission, in my opinion, is that the artists will have free rein to, I guess, show their interpretation of civil liberties and social justice. And in general, like, with the idea of children playing or just being together, and however the artist sees that representing that. I don't know if that's necessarily clear, but so it is up for the artist's interpretation of how they see it.
But don't you think that perhaps people may not see this topic as children playing?
Yes, I do think that.
I, I mean, I personally don't believe that we should be that prescriptive in telling people to interpret, I'm going to say D E I, to interpret D E I through our lens. So I would suggest opening it up to their ideas, and then having Council, the Commission, and the community decide what we all agree on. That would be, that would be my suggestion.
I don't know how that works. Maybe staff can help, because we, as our commission, had proposed something, and the Council had suggested something else. So we're just moving forward with what Council had suggest, or told us to do. So I don't know if, I don't know if you guys would have to go back and change that, because they voted on it. I don't know how that works. So maybe somebody with a higher pay can help.
Council always reserves the right to change just about anything. So if there was a desire from Council to alter the given direction, a Council member would need to make a motion, which would obviously then delay your, your timeline, and depending on what direction they go, could change locations too. So. Councilmember Lamb, I just want to make sure you've got all your questions or comments.
No, actually.
Okay, keep going, keep going.
I would suggest taking a look at our other RFPs for public art. I think, you know, I did go through, I did an online search and just took a look at some other ones, and I do believe that we can write our RFP in a much more compelling manner, because it's important that we get people interested, and how we write this will determine, I think, the quality and the quality and the expertise of the artists that we get. You know, so I would take a look at that. And then my other suggestion would be to rethink what this piece could be. So in our RFP, we could suggest children playing or anything else, but I do think that we should think beyond like a bronze statue. Something, I mean, that's something that's passive. The most powerful public art is the ones that people can engage with. And to think just beyond the typical statue, so to speak. You can think about space, you know, physical space. I think what would be, and this again is just a personal idea, what would be a pretty powerful example of spaces, if we're going to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, is to create a space. I mean, it could be like an amphitheater, a smaller, and I know there's something planned at the town center. You know, it could be steps with grass, and it could have our diversity and equity statement. We could have native plants planted around it where we engage the tribes to suggest what kind of plantings, and then have a land acknowledgement. Councilmember Clark and I were talking about it, and she actually had a great idea about engaging the community, that perhaps another suggestion would be if we had somebody who submitted an RFP who wanted to work with our community. Maybe the community creates tiles, for example, and then they take the tiles that the community creates, and they themselves create something else from that. I think that would be a really great way to talk about inclusion as well. So those were my comments. I know that there were a lot of them, and I, and I hope that we find some of those useful.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran? Oh, Councilmember Moran, you're on mute.
The reason we ended up with the statue was we, we were eliminating, we were trying to eliminate words. We wanted an expression of some kind. And we were trying to stay away from words, if possible, because we were seeing something that had happened in Redmond, and then in a couple other cities where when you get down to words, then you end up with, you know, what happens two years, five years, eight years, 10 years. Sometimes those words are words that you would never use again in the same way. And those words that are once used in one way are now bad to be used in another. So, so we decided that words are probably not something we wanted to see. So we were looking for more of a more of something of a gesture or something that you would see, something visual. And that's how we ended up on, on a statue. So, you know, it, it didn't have to be children playing. It could have been a fountain. It could have been stairs. It could have been, I, I, you know, we saw 10 different pictures. It didn't have to be, you know, that one particular. But what we were trying to do was, was state that it was a visual, and we were trying to stay away from different things. That's what I do remember. And so we may need to go back and, and pull out that meeting and look at those, you know, what we were talking about, because there were some very good points that were made in that discussion.
Right, because we had suggested, or what we had unanimously voted on was a labyrinth that would ask questions, and led you to this, in the center of the labyrinth would be a sculpture.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that we was, the words were one of the things that we said, oh, nope. And so that'd be, right. And so I think that's one of the things that, so we need to go back and pull, pull that meeting out, because there was a really good discussion that happened as to how we ended up where we did.
Right, and I guess we need to know as an art commission, if you, if it is not, or if it's not y'all's desire for it to be just children playing, then it definitely changes how we're going to handle the wording for the RFP, because it was on my understanding that you guys specifically wanted it to be something along the lines of kids. But if that, you know, I mean, and that's for y'all to decide. Either way, it's fine by us. We'll wait for whatever you see, but.
I think that was everybody's favorite, but that was also the most expensive.
I, I don't remember, I'm, you might be, I, it's probably everybody's favorite, because you guys all voted on it, but I don't remember the pricing details. Yeah.
So I, I will make a few comments here, since there aren't any more hands up. I, I do think Councilmember Lamb made a good point. It, it's very probably challenging for us to roll in civil liberties with racial and social justice in one piece. And so I do think her comments relative to what the RFP states, that it's more a D E I piece than what's stated on our agenda bill is probably more accurate. You know, I, I still like this idea, but I also appreciate, you know, the comments that some of our council members have made here, but it was a decision that this Council made last year and gave direction for the Arts Commission. I'm somewhat reticent to upend their whole process and send them back to the drawing table. It's not like this is the only item that the Arts Commission is working on is this one. They have their own schedule, and I am somewhat reticent to upend it. And if we choose to call it something else, if we go out for an RFP, I think that's completely fair in recognition of Councilmember Lamb's comments. If Council chose to upend this and change what it is that the Arts Commission is doing in general, I think it kind of puts it all back to square one, frankly, because depending on what it turns into being, Big Rock North may not be the most appropriate place for it anymore. So, but I do, I do, in going back to what it is currently, I do want to make at least a few comments. I, I like the, the park selection. I did have one question slash concern, which is the height of the fence. I, I live very close to that park, so I am aware of, of the fence, and I know it's not a six-foot fence. But because this is kind of a statement piece, and when you pull up in those parking spots, you're going to be looking at the fence kind of cutting off the statue rather than it being more open. So the Big Rock Park sign is out in front and is not blocked by the, the fencing. So that was my, my concern that I saw there is, you know, how tall is the statue versus the height of the fence, and is there, when you're in the park, obviously not an issue, but when you're pulling up to the park, it might be nice to have whatever it is be in full view rather than obscured partially by the fence.
Is, I would, I'll, I'll try to answer that question, Ashley. I think that, I, I'm new to this, but I think that that would be something that we could include when we do the request for, you know, we do the RFP, right, and when the artists come to us with ideas, that would be one of the pieces that we could give feedback on. I, I think it's very valuable. I, I can imagine this visual line, and the last thing we want is is a lot, it is like a wall in the middle of our, in our art. So that's a, it's a very good point that I think we could include and give feedback on.
Alternatively, through parks, I think that park has several breaks in the fencing. It's not like it's a dog park where it's fenced off. The possibility would exist to remove a portion of fencing so that it isn't obscured by the fence, but you got to run that by your person before you go pulling out fencing. But I, I don't personally see, you know, an issue with having a break in the fencing there to provide an unobstructed field of view. Council, are there any more questions or feedback? Yes, we do. Deputy Mayor Clark? No, you had your hand up. Okay, other, Councilmember Train, did you have any comments before I go back for round two? Nope. Councilmember Howe?
I was just, I, I understand and appreciate, we don't want to start this process over for you folks, because you've already gone very far down the track. I'm just wondering if just adding some language like or. I'm just wondering if just adding some language like or, you know, just adding or. That, that, you know, just kind of opens it up for you so that you can still move ahead with your initial thing. I also was thinking, you know, you do have a, a desire for Eastside artists and you did mention BIPOC, which is good. I'd even make, beat that drum a little harder and make sure that we are expanding to publications that perhaps you haven't thought about. Like the Seattle Medium as a case in point, Stranger is another. You know, so that there's, there's other places for expanding our notion of the community that we could hopefully attract. And I, you know, I don't know if it's something you could even work on in parallel with something with art students, for example, from community college or something like that, just to pull them into a process too, not to bog you down further. But those are just two things that came to mind. So thank you so much again.
Yeah, thank you. And I do think, again, the staff can correct me, but I think that we are at a point where you guys don't want it to be children or you want us to change the language. I think we can. But I'm not su, I don't think we could, I think, I don't know, we'll do anything you guys want. That's all I'll say. I, can I speak to that a little bit? I think that as part of, as the part of the leadership team with Ashley, I think we are at a point where the, the work involved, we could pivot it at this point. If you did, I get, I don't know if it's a, if you, if, if you chose to make a motion to sort of widen that, I think it, I think the leadership could pivot. I think without it being a, a real detriment. I mean, we have a T, a committee set up that works on permanent art. And that committee could take traction, make traction, I think relatively quickly. We're in a, we have a good situation right now where we have a grants committee that's just finished working on the grants recommendations, et cetera. So I think this is something that the permanent art could pivot on relatively quickly if, if you were to make a motion. So we don't want to be the reason that it's held back, but we'll move forward in any way that you're saying is reflective of the council and, and where you see the vision going forward. So.
It's number Lamb.
This piece of art will live for a very long time, so I think it's important that we get it right. I don't think that pivoting, and like you said, Ashley and Megan, it's not that big of a pivot and that it's really the language that will be in the RFP. I can make a motion?
Go ahead.
So, I motion that we change the title of the RFP to something along the lines of honoring diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that we open submissions for the RFP that the, that were open to all ideas. And that we hopefully, and, and we look towards people, Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And try to, you know, get more applicants that way as well. And then, I, the location could be determined based on the art that's submitted. And then, council and Arts Commission and the public, if they so choose, can decide on the art.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Lamb, did you want to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I'll make one comment. The end of your motion said the public could decide. And that's not how this will actually ultimately go. Unless your motion is to literally put this out for a vote to the people, otherwise it lies with the council. So I, I just wanted to get clarification on that because as it stands.
They could provide feedback. They could provide feedback. I mean, it would be great to have people other than just two bodies deciding on a piece of public art.
Okay, so I, I was trying to scribble down everything on your motion. Is it, do you want to just revise that last portion? That, I mean, the public is always going to have the ability to give comment because they can give public comment through the Arts Commission as well as through the city council. So if that is sufficient to embody what you were going for, I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
So the decision on the art piece will be dependent on the Arts Commission and city council.
Okay, so that motion was moved and seconded by councilmember Howe. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five, one, motion passes. Thank you, council. Okay, just want to make sure you felt like you had adequate direction. Okay.
Thank you.
Megan and Ashley, thanks so much for joining us this evening. We appreciate all your work with Arts Commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Angelia and Chris as well. Okay, next we have, oh, council, first of all, it's nine o'clock. So does council want to take a break? Before we move to the next item? Yes, I'm seeing yes. Okay, so let's come back at nine oh five. Can I give the rest of our councilmembers just a second to pop on here before we get going?
Mayor, this is Jeff. Audrey Starcy will be leading this item with her, her teams, just to let you know.
Thank you.
I'm here, but I'm going to leave my camera off while I finish my dinner.
Okay, so we've got a, um, councilmembers at least. Does councilmember Train on? Not yet. Okay, well, hopefully he is shortly behind to join us. So our next item is a presentation on the 2022 City of Spanish local road and safety plan. I'm going to turn this over to Audrey Starcy.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. This evening, the Public Works Department will be presenting the 2022 Local Road Safety Plan. Presenting the plan to you this evening is our traffic engineering manager, Linda Salha. And Victor Salmon will transportation solutions. And without further ado, I'll have Linda start the presentation and we will be available afterwards for any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. My name is Linda Salha. I'm the traffic engineering manager in the Department of Public Works at the city. This presentation that we have prepared for you will provide you with an overview of the local road safety plan. It will explain its elements, the engineering analysis done to develop it, and it will provide a summary of its conclusions. Next slide, please. The local road safety plan is a data-driven analysis done with the objective of identifying safety improvement projects. Setting, setting improvement opportunities on city roads. Historic data of serious and fatal injury accidents are used to conduct such analysis. The plan supports Washington State's Target Zero traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries by the year 2030. With this plan, we aim to apply for Washington State Department, Department of Transportation City Safety Program Grant. This plan is a requirement for the grant application. The deadline for this grant application is this Friday, March 4th. And the selection of the city safety projects will be announced in the fall of this year. And now I will hand it over to Victor Salmon from TSI, the traffic consultancy firm that helped us develop the plan. Victor?
Yeah, thank you, Linda. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to keep this a little interesting. It was, it was an insightful project to work on. I really enjoyed it. As Linda mentioned, it's a data-driven process designed by the Federal Highway Administration in order that we focus safety funds on improvements that reduce injuries and fatalities. So you're, we're, we're not looking at rear-end crashes and fender benders. It's really targeted on injury and fatal accidents. Fortunately, there were no fatal crashes between the years 2016 and 2020 in the data provided by WashDOT. There were, I think, over 1,400 crashes in that five-year period in the city of Spanish. So there were no shortage of crashes to sort through. But one of the things we look at in this plan is looking at a, the crash types, what they call focus crash types and focus facility types. So it's really what types of crashes are resulting in injuries and what types of facilities are those crashes located on. There were 11 serious injury crashes. They're shown on this map identified by the type. We had four crashes with, that resulted in serious injuries with, with cyclists. One of those cyclists actually was cross-classified as a fixed object crash because the cyclist actually hit a construction sign, then also hit a guardrail before they left the roadway. So I was, I thought I'd go through the 11 just to kind of give you a sense of what we discovered. And then I'll give you the number you can kind of see on the map. Crash number 41 was a cyclist that actually crashed, was struck by a car because the cyclist ignored the traffic signal at South 212th. A vehicle was making a left turn, going northbound into that driveway that's opposite the traffic signal. The cyclist ran a red light and was hit by the car. Crash number 238 was a crash on 228th Avenue South, just south of Southeast 20th. The hill is very steep there, relatively speaking for an arterial roadway. The cyclist was using the sidewalk because there's no on-street bike lane in that section of 228. It appears they hit either a utility cover or a very steep driveway transition, lost control. Because essentially we're going way too fast to be riding on a sidewalk versus the street. Crash number 517 was another bicyclist riding with traffic on the shoulder of Eastlake Spanish Parkway that just lost control due to probably debris on the shoulder. So just a, no other vehicle involved. Just the cyclist lost control of their bicycle. And then crash number 243 across the street from crash 238, a very similar situation. Cyclist exceeding the safe speed for the, the mixed-use facility that's on the east side of the roadway. And actually left the roadway and encountered a northbound vehicle. So two, two in the same spot and you'll see kind of some commonality when we go into the, the risk factors for crashes. We had a couple of pedestrian-involved crashes. One was a southbound motor vehicle, crash number 426, that actually hit a traffic control flagger that was part of a construction operation. And then crash number 60, 650 on Eastlake Spanish Parkway. A driver crashed into a, actually a child playing on the shoulder. Not, not a good place to be playing at all. One of those steep driveways coming up from the lake up to the parkway. Those, all, a lot of those have sight distance challenges. Crash number 597 is the one I mentioned. It's kind of near the, the small retail center there. Fairly close to the rectangular flashing beacon crossing just north of there. Again, it appears the cyclist hit a construction sign, caused them to lose control of their bicycle, went over the guardrail and injured themselves in that way. And then, let's see, that was 597. Let's go to the next one. And then we get into some fixed object crashes, crash number 950. The north end of the city on Sahaly Way, right at North City Limits, northbound vehicle going down the hill downgrade. Lost control of their vehicle and struck a utility pole that wasn't protected by a curb or barrier or guardrail. Crash number 159 and 1238, the two brown dots were, were left-turn related crashes. The, the only two we saw with injuries, but what was interesting is they occurred before the city's upgraded flashing yellow arrow permissive, protected left-turn lane project was implemented. And we did not see any of those left-turn related crashes after that project was completed. So it looks like the previous safety work and improving left turns has actually paid off and, and that type of injury crash has dropped off. And then, let's see, we had one crash, number 49, in a residential neighborhood. An outlier that was fairly unusual. It was an alcohol-impaired younger driver that lost control on a very low-speed residential street and, and managed to overturn their vehicle and hit a power pole altogether. But a very kind of unique crash that, that didn't share many risk factors with any of the other crashes. So what we found in looking at, again, over 1,400 crashes is that the primary types of crashes that are causing injuries in Spanish are bicyclists-related, pedestrian-related, and the others involve hitting a fixed object. Also, a roadway departure and encountering an object outside the roadway. And those crashes primarily occurred on principal arterials and minor arterials, which, which makes sense. Those are the, those are the roadways that have the most traffic. They actually have the highest probability of crashes occurring. So then we looked at what were some of those risk factors, kind of the commonality between some of these crashes and where they were occurring. Clearly, a, a lack of bicycle lanes was involved in those high-speed sort of sidewalk bike trail crashes we saw on 228th. Horizontal curves were primarily related to the fixed object crashes. You know, more, much more likely to leave the roadway and hit an object outside the roadway on a curve. Roadway downgrade, that was common to both the bicycle crashes, the two, two on 228th and the fixed object crash on Sahaly Way. So again, going downhill, causing, resulting in increased speed, resulting in serious crashes. Average daily traffic, again, the, the crashes occurred on the higher-volume roadways, which makes sense just by probabilities. But also, they were proximate, proximate to schools and other pedestrian generators, which again makes sense. You see more bicycles around schools and other facilities where it's a reasonably short trip, less than four or five miles versus a, a 10-mile grocery shopping trip. So we created a scoring matrix to take a look at these crashes and see if we could, how we might prioritize looking for improvements and/or grants. So we looked at three priority groups. So out of that scoring matrix, if you, if a roadway segment scored over seven, we put that in the higher, high-risk list. And then the medium and low, and those are in the traffic study, or in the study that was included in your packet. And then once we found those high-risk locations and we looked at what are some of the, what we call countermeasures? So safety countermeasures to reduce crash potential. What can we do to be, to begin to eliminate those crashes so that we can eliminate fatalities and injuries consistent with federal highways and WashDOT's Vision Zero policy of eliminating crash fatalities in, in the foreseeable future? It's going to be very difficult to do, but that's the goal. These were also presented at a WashDOT Local Road Safety Plan webinar that our staff attended to be sure we understood the latest. They, they come out with new ones every year. Some of the newer ones that are going through the approv, approval process are at the top of this list. Speed management, which is, is an issue here, especially on the downgrades. But looking at, traditionally, we set speed limits as a measure of how fast everyone's going. Kind of looking at that 85th percentile speed. And if everybody's going 50 miles an hour, that must be the speed limit. What we're finding is that, you know, lower speeds definitely improve safety. And the idea of a target speed has come out is what, what is the appropriate speed for all the users on the roadway? And then also that target speed or appropriate speed might be changing over the course of the day. And maybe it's lower during periods of congestion and higher when traffic is lighter. So those are some of the new, new tools that are out there. Also, speed and safety cameras, I just saw, noticed, I think a week or so ago in the current session that photo enforcement for speeding outside of school zones looks like it may be approved. So currently, those automatic enforcement cameras are limited to certain locations. Looks like they're broadening their use. So we looked at, again, creating those, those groups, the high, medium, and low risk. So we looked at, again, creating those those groups, the high, medium, and low-risk facilities. And really, what we found, being sensitive to the city's situation now with the limited transportation improvement program because all federally funded projects need to be on a TIP. We the program does allow for data collection. We had a little bit of miscommunication with the program because they they funded what were called studies last year. We proposed some, and they made it clear that they're not going to fund studies. They'll fund data collection. So we are going to propose to suggesting that your grant application includes data collection on the top three segments, which we'll talk about. And they're primarily intended to improve bicycle pedestrian safety and reduce fixed object crashes. And so the three segments that we looked at are Two Twenty-Eighth Avenue from Northeast Eighth to Southeast Eighth and Two Twenty-Eighth Avenue from Southeast Eighth to Southeast Twenty-Fourth. So those are the segments of Two Twenty-Eighth that were built without on-street bike lanes. So if you kind of recollect Two Twenty or Two Twenty-Eighth, south of Southeast Twenty-Fourth, that that part was built by King County before the city was incorporated. It has on-street bike lanes. The city project, in an effort to reduce project costs, provided a widened sidewalk on the east side and did not put on-street bike lanes in, and now we're seeing a consequence of that. And so these numbers are probably higher. Again, we at the time we wrote the the drafted the study, we were hoping we could get a study funding. We've reduced these numbers to collect, again, begin the process for these three segments of collecting data. So actually getting bicycle counts, the city typically counts ADT for vehicle for motorized vehicles. But those roadway tubes don't capture bicycles. So we want to do some special data collection for how many bicycles are used in these segments to further refine which area would need those improvements or something first. And this might be on-street bike lanes, but we but it might also be improving that mixed-use facility so it is more of a cycle track. One of the problems with riding on a sidewalk on either side of Two Twenty-Eighth is the driveway cuts are too abrupt for the sidewalk to go much faster than five miles an hour. And that appears to be how those crashes occurred is, you know, they you hit that drop-off at the driveway going downhill at a pretty good speed, and it's very destabilizing. The third project would be more focused on mitigation of fixed object crashes. So that's the segment of Sahaly Way. At the northern city limits, a lot of that has no curb and gutter. It's an open-shoulder section. In some cases, there are guardrails in place, but in other cases, again, where this one driver did encounter a power pole after leaving the roadway, they aren't. So in this case, it would be more of some data collection about what type of obstructions are in the roadway. Sometimes it's a power pole that was added from the last time guardrails were looked at and installed. The the last major guardrail project in the city, I got, again, was a county project prior to incorporation where they put in miles of guardrail, but conditions have changed. And so we thought that would be good to look at now. So again, the next steps, the the city's citywide safety program is every two years. Counties get a shot at this funding on the on the odd years, cities get it in the even years. So for this year, we're suggesting that and have helped the city put together an application for just data collection for those three segments to begin the process of being ready for potentially a project in 2022. Just to give you the an idea of the magnitude of these safety grants, there were thirty-nine projects awarded in 2020 to cities. One of those was for over two million dollars of sidewalk improvements. Eight of them were for over one and a half million dollars, primarily pedestrian improvements, not as many bicycle improvements. And fifteen of them were over a million dollars. And these are these safety projects have a zero percent match if you build them on time. So it's a it's a very good resource. So we would be expecting that in 2024, hopefully, we would have a project identified so that you could take advantage of this program instead of just data collection. Some other observations, we did a field review of all these injury locations. Some of the pavement markings are are deteriorating quite a bit. That can cause some driver confusion. In the area of Two Forty-Fourth and Northeast Eighth, a lot of construction has occurred out there with intermittent frontage improvements, and it results in sort of intermittent striping and lane assignments as you drive down the road. There's a couple of areas on Two Forty-Fourth where it it looks like you're in the curb lane, but then you have to make a lane change when that curb and sidewalk ends at the end of a development. So just a suggestion that we, the city, take a look at that, particularly when doing paving projects, to take advantage of the pavement that's been built by development and get it used. There's some areas on Northeast Eighth where the the roadway now could be could be marked with a two-way left-turn lane and bikes lanes. You know, enough projects have been developed on either side of the roadway that you have a full section now. We mentioned improved construction zone standards, and the city staff have told us they're already working on that to make sure that contractors know that, for instance, on on the signs on Eastlake-Samish Parkway associated with the trail construction, we've noticed that cones have now been placed ahead of those signs to give especially a bicyclist warning that there's there's something to avoid because they turn those sides kind of backwards and sideways at the end of their workday, but they're still in the shoulder. They're still taking up space, so they need to have a warning associated with them. And then, again, I mentioned a very large number of total crashes. There are a lot of non-injury rear-end fixed object crashes that occur both on Two Twenty-Eighth, primarily from Northeast Eighth down to Iskowal Pine Lake Road, which you would expect likely with a lot of new drivers associated with three high schools, and they're your busiest corridors. And while they wouldn't be eligible for this type of federal funding because fortunately, there are no injuries associated with them, there is a lot of property damage occurring on the Two Twenty-Eighth Avenue corridor. And those property damage crashes account for some of the congestion in the corridor as well. So while the flashing yellow arrow program was something that helped relooking at speed limits to reduce rear-end crashes, continuing to monitor and maybe move towards an adaptive traffic signal control system that can adapt itself to traffic conditions on the fly, those are shown actually to reduce rear-end crashes by about fifteen percent. So the all the data crunching we did was provided to staff in GIS files as well as the report that was attached to your agenda. So anytime the city is looking at a new project, they now have a GIS database that they can mine for crash information on any particular segment or intersection they might be doing an improvement at and make sure that safety is considered in the design of that project at that time. And that, I think, is it. Ready for questions if you have.
Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there questions?
Thank you, Victor. That was very clear. And Linda, thank you very much. The I noticed when I was reading through things that we it the there were a couple of mentions that a couple of accidents happened at midnight. Was there was time much of a factor or were these during the day for the most part or?
Yeah, they were spread around. We we didn't find, you know, nighttime as a contributing factor. Again, the one, the alcohol-impaired outlier was another midnight one basically on a residential almost cul-de-sac, so we 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 left that one out. But yeah, and that's, you know, some sometimes the projects include illumination if streetlights are missing. But that it appeared that the, you know, the grades were the biggest problem we had with with vehicles exceeding the safe speed, whether they were bicycles or automobiles. The bicycles just losing control and crashing, and the vehicles losing control and hitting something else.
I see. And if you could help me understand the cost of the studies, they they for me are eye-popping because they're new for me. So a hundred thousand dollars for a study and they can, really?
Yeah, it's it's amazing how guess how fast that study money can go. But trying to figure out how to potentially, you know, squeeze in a bike lane in a cost-effective manner, if that's where we wanted to go, or potentially redesign the sidewalk into a cycle track. We wanted to be sure that we understood, you know, what utilities might be require relocation, how much right-of-way is available, would you need to buy right-of-way, can you fit it in? One of the concepts that, you know, just in being in the field and looking at the crash locations is, you know, you you could start looking at where where left turns aren't required, narrowing the median, the landscape median potentially to create room for a bike lane, and then potentially narrowing the actually the existing wide sidewalk and moving that curb line over. You could actually fit bike lanes in within the existing right-of-way width. Then it's a challenge when you get to the intersections because you need the full left-turn lanes at the intersections. And if we restrict left-turn lanes anywhere, you need to provide U-turn opportunities. So so the numbers are daunting. The the data collection only, I think we're at around a thirty-five thousand dollar estimate to just kind of get started for all three of those corridors to look at, you know, kind of where are we? How much right-of-way do we have? What magnitude is the problem? But but if if you want to have, you know, a a good estimate for a million-dollar construction project, you need you need to spend almost a hundred thousand dollars so you're sure to ask for enough when you're going to build a one- or two-million-dollar safety improvement. So part of it is investing in that project enough to know what you need to do.
To get it accurate. And the only other question I have associated with that has to do with modalities because Metro, for example, is rebranding themselves as a as a mobility company, not just buses, right? So we've got other modalities that are coming in in terms of electric bikes, potentially scooters. And I'm assuming that anything that you're doing here would take that into account or at least have some acknowledgement of how things change over time.
Yep. So we we tried to make sure we had where we could either either we were specific where we had a bicycle problem or also just multimodal enhancements.
There we go.
You know, e-bikes are going to change the dynamics of bicycling quite a bit to where speed is even more of an issue, and they're going to operate much more like motorcycles or automobiles and much, you know, they they won't be slowing down going uphill anymore. And and even even the speed-limited e-bikes at fifteen miles an hour, they could run into trouble on a on a facility that's not designed for fifteen miles an hour. A normal sidewalk with those sharp abrupt driveways cut into it is not safe for a wheeled vehicle at fifteen miles an hour.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Liam.
So I'm I think it's Southeast Twentieth or maybe it's 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 it goes from Two Twelve. It's the road between Two Twelve and Two Twenty-Eighth. Those those bike like those bike shoulders have green. They're like painted green, but it's nowhere else in the city is like that. I just was curious if that was a test and whether or not that has helped in any way.
It was it was an experimental project when it was done. There was a a time at which cities were looking at. That was actually a very early kind of test, experimental application of green paint. More jurisdictions are using it, especially through intersections to identify the the bicycle route through an intersection versus the vehicle route. From our data collection, I can say there were no injury bicycle-related crashes on that facility. So you could infer that it helped. And generally, like I said, especially in terms of a limited application of funding, those seem to be most effective through intersections, especially when you have right-turn lanes at intersections, identifying the the bicycle area in that space with a colored pavement. City of Bellevue is doing a lot of that now. There's a lot of if you want to see some of it, there's some there's some in the East Gate interchange area that's not too far away. So that's coming back. It was kind of looked at ten, fifteen years ago, kind of more, do we do it everywhere? It's pretty expensive and it's costly to maintain. But now it's showing up again as a as a as guidance primarily through complicated intersections.
Thank you. One thing I've noted on that green paint just anecdotally is that it seems to change color pretty quickly. And it it used to be a very vivid color, almost lime green, and it's faded. And then, when a new development went in and they had to repaint, it was starkly different in color than the rest of the street. So the I think you lose something over time with that green paint, too. It's not quite as bright and vivid.
And that's true for all pavement markings. They 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 all require maintenance. And so if you want to keep that bright and effective, that's, you know, that's a lot of restriping compared to centerline striping.
Well, Victor, Linda, I don't see any additional questions from counsel. So thank you. I think this is informative, if nothing else.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel, we're moving on here. Our next item, and I want to make sure I'm not missing. I think I took item six from consent after unfinished business. So next item discussion is the city council member vacancy and selection process. And I think this one's really in in our camp to discuss. I think the staff put in kind of a proposed second-round process, which I think closely mirrors what we had in in the first.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I do have something that I could show what that process is, if you'd like to have a look at.
Sure, yeah, if there's a visual graphic, that'd be great to throw up.
Okay, one moment, please.
Well, that's being pulled up. I think I would make one note that I think might be helpful is that we did a spreadsheet before when we actually went through the selection process. And in retrospect, I don't think that was helpful for us, nor was it helpful for the general public. And the reason I would say that is, I think, when we did the appointment for Councilwoman Rodell, that was done by motion. And when you do something by motion rather than by spreadsheet, that allows for discussion by council. And I think, you know, we got several emails from residents that were like, oh, you went back and just did and talked about everybody in executive session. And, you know, executive session provides us the ability to talk about, you know, their qualifications. But we never had the opportunity to discuss the candidates in open session for the benefit of, you know, our fellow council members, the candidates themselves, and then the general public. So my desire would be, when we do this again, is to not use a spreadsheet. But thank you, Madam City Clerk, for putting up this proposed timeline and the process. And I'll open it up for counsel for questions, changes to this process. Does counsel like the process and the timeline that's outlined here? Counselor, how?
I I would say I would move to accept it as is.
Counselor, retreat.
I I I'd like to make a motion to change. So I'd like I moved to that. I moved to nominate the qualifying candidates for appointment to the council position number six, that those nominations come from the floor and a vote on each candidate until a candidate receives four votes in order to receive appointment to seat number six would be the process in which we use.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Counselor, retreat. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, as Mayor Mountow just spoke to it as well, I think we did a disservice to the candidates and to the public. And so when we get to that April fifteenth meeting and we're selecting the new council member, we need to do that in open, public meeting. We need to call a candidate a nomination from the floor from one of the six council members. And then we vote on that person. And we would also have the ability to speak to the the nomination and have a discussion about that person's qualifications and why we would be selecting them. Seems to me the fairest and best way of moving forward based on the the results of our our first round of the process. So during the second round, I'd like to see a small change there at the end on either March fifteenth or April eighth. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselmember Liam.
So not so your process, not all candidates would get nominated, only the ones that we support, correct? Counselor, member of train.
Sorry, you were breaking up there. I think that the only ones we support, I I missed that last part.
Get nominated, obviously. So in so that's just your way of narrowing down the field?
No, no, the the that process is are is still in existence through executive set. Let's see, so on the spreadsheet here, you could see you're going to get the qualified candidates. We're going to review the applications for them and then select finalists for interviews. Then we're going to interview finalists. And then, when we go to vote, we just bring them up one at a time at the vote. And then when we go to vote, we just bring them up one at a time at the voting.
Okay.
But so let's just say we have six finalists because there's the four that we had on the first round. And I, I'm just speculating that they apply, so two, three, four, one, whatever it is. The new people, this is what Karen Howe was talking about, the councilmember Howe. The new people, we're going to see, make sure they're qualified and then add them to, it, it, we don't need to interview the first, the four. So we interview the, the new people that we would like to interview. Now we have the first four, if they all reapply. And we would also have anyone new that we'd interviewed. Once we have that group, however many that is, um, then we would just bring their nomination from the dais, from the floor and, and speak their name as I nominate so and so. Then we vote on that person. If they receive four votes, they get the seat. If they don't, we go to the, then we look for another nomination. And then that person would, we'd vote on them, we'd speak to it, why we were going to vote for who or what. And, and then we move forward. So we can, we can show, we are, to the public, we are going through a process that's fair and we are giving everyone an opportunity to be voted on. Last time we left two candidates sitting there going, what did you guys just do? How about, we didn't do anything for them? So that just seemed unfair to me. So I want to rectify that problem.
Okay. Councilmember Howe?
Well, okay, so the question I have, Kent, has to do with um, like if you bring up somebody, I nominate so and so.
Yeah.
Then, then you speak to, you speak to that. And then you have people that are going for and against.
Yes.
Right? And so you have to have rules around that. So it's like, otherwise you're just playing ping pong. Um, I'm suggesting, so you might want to have it um, more like um, you know, two for, two against, or up to two for, or up to two against, or whatever. And then cut off discussion at that point. It's a suggestion to consider.
Oh, well, we can be polite on that.
Council, council, we can't have this be a discussion.
Oh.
Cause we're deliberating on a motion, we can't have a discussion, so.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So Councilmember Howe, you have the floor.
You lured me in, Kent.
If, if you're, if you're finished with your comments, Councilmember Howe, we can move on. But if, I don't want to take the floor away from me if you still have more. Okay. So what I might offer is that this is like any other motion that council would make. There, you know, you could say, I move that we appoint, you know, John Doe. It gets a second, then we speak to the motion. Um, and, you know, technically, I think everybody can go, you know, a couple rounds on this. Um, but, you know, we don't limit typical debate for the most part. I mean, if we're going to, you know, spend an hour on somebody, I think someone's just going to simply call the question. Uh, and we're going to vote on them anyway. So I, I might suggest that we don't need parameters around this. It's, it's pretty standard procedure to just nominate someone and then deliberate and vote. And if they get four votes, they are now our next council member. If they do not, then another nomination could be made by another council member. Um, that being said, council, I think the motion was only about that particular process and not about the proposed timeline. So um, if someone would like to offer up an, an amendment to the main motion to accept the proposed timeline or change the timeline. But I think Councilmember Treeen's motion was only relative to voting on members rather than the proposed timeline. Or I can simply make the amendment and I'll just do, so.
I'll say your amendment.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment that we accept the proposed timeline and process here, as stated on the graphic.
Second.
Okay, so now we are deliberating. Um, this has been moved and seconded on this proposed timeline and process. So are, is there any other discussion on the proposed timeline and process? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, the amendment passes. So now we're back to the main motion as amended. Is there further discussion on the main motion as amended? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five, one, the main motion as amended passes. We have our proposed timeline and process. So I think that will conclude this item, council. Unless council has anything else on this topic, we'll move to the next one. So we are moving to the King County Countywide Planning Policies and the City Growth Targets. And I believe we have David Pyle and Miriam Leitner that will guide us through that.
That, that's correct, Mayor. I'm sure Lead is promoting them now.
Great. And council, I'm just going to say it's nine forty-four right now. So I suspect this is going to take longer than fifteen minutes. So we will need to extend the meeting. It might be wise to do that now before we're cutting off David or Miriam.
Motion to extend to ten thirty?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor extending to ten thirty, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, extend to ten thirty. All right, sorry, David and Miriam, just wanted to get that out of the way.
No problem. Um, good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and turn off my video for the duration of uh, the presentation. See if I got that right. Second here, um, let's see, I think it's the wrong screen, so try this one more time. Screen two, there we go. And. Second. One more time. There we go. The woes of multiple screens. All right, thank you. Um, good evening, council members. Miriam Leitner, our planning manager, and I are back again to carry on the discussion related to the remand of our growth targets. Tonight, we will be providing some different growth target options for council consideration. After tonight's meeting, we will be revisiting the questions we posed back at the February fifteenth meeting and asking council to select tentative growth targets that staff can share with the King County inter-jurisdictional team and the King County Growth Management Planning Council at their April meetings for their input. Before we get started tonight, I was asked to explain the discrepancy in terms of housing units reported as achieved. And I wanted to start tonight's presentation with a quick summary of the issue so we can make sure we're all on the same page. Our growth target for the two thousand six to twenty thirty-five, as stated in the current comprehensive plan, is four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine housing units. This is an adjusted number from the original four thousand housing units that you'll see in the two thousand twelve King County Countywide Planning Policies, with the large increase coming from the incorporation of Kohani and other areas. As part of the initial phase of the urban growth capacity study, the city was required to report our progress towards the two thousand six to twenty thirty-five growth target, which included data pulled from the city's permit tracking system from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen. During the two thousand twelve to two out, two thousand eighteen timeframe, there were one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three housing units reported as complete from the city's permit tracking system. The last time this number was calculated from the permit system was in support of the past Buildable Lands Report completed in two thousand fourteen, which reported six hundred and twenty-one units of development between two thousand six and two thousand twelve. When you combine the total units built between two thousand six and two thousand eighteen, you get two thousand four hundred and ninety-five units, as reported from the city's permit tracking system. Despite collecting data from the city's tracking system on all units built as part of the urban growth capacity study, King County decided to utilize data from the Office of Financial Management, or OFM, small area population estimates for housing unit growth, as well as the Puget Sound Regional Council's covered employment estimates to look at progress towards growth targets. This data showed that Sammamish achieved three hu- three thousand five hundred and eighty-five housing units between two thousand six and twen- two thousand eighteen. This decision to use finance, Office of Financial Management data was made by King County and was applied to all cities uniformly. Cities did not have the option to choose which data source to use. Rather, it was directed by King County that the Office of Financial Management data would be used. This was not discretionary. Regardless, when staff identified the discrepancy in housing units built between what was reported from the city's permit tracking system versus that which was reported by the Office of Financial Management, staff reached out to King County to get assistance in understanding the discrepancy and spent several weeks reviewing the various data sources from the Urban Growth Capacity Study and the two thousand fourteen Buildable Lands Report and working with King County staff. When looking at the data submitted by the city of Sammamish for the two thousand fourteen Buildable Lands Report, King County informed the city that they found a staff review note related to an adjustment for annexed areas. In this adjustment, seventeen hundred single-family housing units are added and three thousand multifamily housing units are removed, which was a correction made by King County due to a mistake with the two thousand six housing unit estimate. The reviewer note stated that four hundred and twenty-five housing units were annexed within the two thousand nine to two thousand ten timeframe and that the twelve hundred housing unit difference was unknown. Unfortunately, none of the staff who worked on the two thousand fourteen Buildable Lands Report still work for the city and our record-keeping and documentation norms back then were less than refined. So staff were unable to find any additional information and we are still unclear as to the source of this problem. Due to the timing of when the two thousand fourteen Buildable Lands Report was submitted, staff believe that the twelve hundred housing units may have been related to the anticipated annexation of Kohani. Assuming this is correct, these housing units should not have been noted in the two thousand fourteen Buildable Lands Report or in data provided to OFM, as the city did not annex Kohani until two thousand sixteen. We have set up a meeting with the Office of Financial Management staff later this month to see if they have any additional information and to help staff gain a deeper understanding of what data is used to develop OFM's numbers. I do want to note, while this is an important discrepancy that we're looking, that, that we're working to understand, our new growth target begins at two thousand nineteen. So this historic data is a separate issue and is not really relevant to conversations on the two thousand forty-four growth targets. Although, we have learned from this error and current staff are careful to enter information into our permit tracking software. And we made sure to carefully document our processes used to produce the work for this last urban growth capacity report so that it can be used in the future. We have learned from this situation and have been careful to leave detailed information documenting the steps taken in support of the city's land capacity analysis. Ultimately, this issue is anecdotal at this point, as King County has directed that Office of Financial Management data is to be used to determine housing growth. To help clarify further, the snippet is directly from the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study methodology. You can see highlighted in green, King County's direction to use Office of Financial Management data to determine housing unit growth. City staff did raise to King County staff the issue that the Office of Financial Management data did not line up with data produced by the city's permit tracking system. King County staff indicated that it did not matter as they were using Office of Financial Management data for the urban growth capacity study and growth target-setting caucus purpose. This is what we mean when we say the discrepancy in data is not important for the conversation on growth targets, as King County specifically directs city to use Office of Financial Management data. Moving on, to preface the conversation tonight, we wanted to remind council that land being discussed tonight has already gone through a detailed process that removed parcels that were less likely to develop or redevelop during the twenty-year planning period using the guidance from King County. This included the removal of critical areas, as well as areas with major barriers to sewer access and areas less likely to redevelop like parks, schools, religious institutions, and golf courses. Critical areas removed included no disturbance areas, bogs, lakes, steep slopes, streams, wetlands, and associated buffers. A reduction in capacity was also applied for other critical areas that typically impact the way a project can be designed, such as a critical aquifer recharge area, erosion hazard areas, flood plains, landslide hazard areas, seismic hazard areas, and others. Following reductions for critical areas, land capacity was again reduced for public purpose areas like stormwater facilities, as well as right-of-way areas. The final reduction on top of that is the market factor, which is the percentage of buildable land that due to market constraints is ultimately unlikely to be developed during the twenty-year planning period. As we move towards a conversation on growth targets, a few weeks ago, we ended the presentation with these two questions for your consideration. Please keep these questions in mind, as we'll be coming back to them later this evening. First question is, are the market factors previously, previously selected by the city council still appropriate? Second question is, given the changes in land capacity and consideration of regional housing needs, what are the appropriate growth targets for Sammamish? We have included a suggested formula to help the council this evening with this discussion. This includes selecting a growth target for residential units and commercial units by category and then adding them up. There will be more on this later in this presentation. However, let's first review the categories. Our first residential category is single-family residential outside of town center and includes the R one, R four, R six, and R eight zones. A majority of capacity in this category is in the R four and R six zones and would come in the form of infill small project development as the number of large, meaningful land assemblies available for development and redevelopment is low. If the council feels continued infill development will occur at a high rate over the next twenty years or by two thousand forty-four, then selecting a growth target that aligns with the low-market factor capacity for this category would be appropriate. Inversely, if the council feels continued infill development in the residential zones will slow due to various factors, then selecting a growth target that aligns with the high-market factor capacity for this category would be appropriate. And here's what the numbers would look like for the different market factors for this category. A final table listing all categories and units available under different market factors is available in tonight's agenda bill. Our next residential category is multifamily and mixed-use residential outside of town center and includes the R twelve, R eighteen, neighborhood business, community business, and office zones. While the neighborhood business, community business, and office zones currently don't have residential, the code does allow for mixed use in these zones, and that's why they've been included here. A majority of the capacity in this category is in the CB zone and would come in the form of redevelopment or infill redevelopment, such as a conversion of underutilized parking lot space to add new mixed-use five-over-one development. If the council feels redevelopment or infill development will occur in this category at a high rate over the next twenty years or by two thousand forty-four, then selecting a growth target that aligns with the low-market factor capacity for this category would be appropriate. Or, if the council feels continued infill development in this category will not materialize or will be slowed, then selecting a growth target that aligns with the high-market factor capacity for this category would be appropriate. And here is what the residential numbers would look like for the different market factors in this category. We also wanted to share what the commercial numbers would look like for the different market factors in the office, community business, and neighborhood business zones. Keep in mind that the market factor that you choose for residential will autofill the market factor for the commercial category as the market factor applies to the land supply before the units are calculated and the residential and commercial units are rooted from the same land supply number. If you choose high in residential, you are required to use high in commercial as well. And now let's talk about the town center. For the town center residential category, which includes the TCA zones and the TCB, TCC, TCD, and TCE zones, the capacity from the Urban Growth Capacity Study is based on minimum assigned density and does not take into account bonus density. Town center allows for bonus-density dwelling units, which will allow a development to exceed the minimum or base density. Commercial space in the town center is allocated by zone with opportunity for bonus. Commercial space in the town center is allocated by zone with opportunity for bonus. For these reasons, we are presenting two different options to think about when it comes to growth targets for town center. If the council feels the town center is positioned to fully develop over the next twenty years or by two thousand forty-four and will successfully maximize use of bonus density as allowed by the city's codes, then the selection of a growth target that aligns with the remaining town center residential units covered under the town center FEIS would be appropriate. Another option would be for the council to select the low market factor. If the council feels the development of the town center will be a slow progression over time and will only partially develop over the next twenty years and those projects that are built will only achieve minimal bonus density, then selection of a growth target that aligns with the high market factor for this category would be appropriate. If the council feels development of the town center will be a slow progression over time and will only partially develop over the next twenty years, then selection of a jobs growth target that aligns with the high market factor for this category would be appropriate. Inversely, if the council feels the town center is positioned to fully develop over the next twenty years, then selection of a jobs growth target that aligns with the remaining town center commercial space covered under the EIS would be appropriate. The first option we're presenting to think about for growth targets for the town center is to base them off of the remainder of what was studied under the town center final environmental impact statement or FEIS. Looking at residential, three hundred and twenty-six units have been built in the town center to date with an additional three hundred and ninety housing units in the pipeline. As informed by the town center subarea FEIS, the cap for new housing units in the town center is two thousand. Subtracting the projects that have been built and those in the pipeline from the housing unit cap studied under the town center FEIS, one thousand two hundred and eighty-four new housing units remain. And looking at commercial, we currently have a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial space that has been built in the town center with eighty-two thousand square feet of commercial space in the pipeline under permit review. This gives us a total of two hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty-five square feet of commercial space accounted for out of the four hundred and thousand square feet of commercial space studied under the FEIS. So, we have a hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-five square feet of commercial space remaining before supplemental EIS would be required. And, for commercial, we have to apply the three hundred and seventy square feet of commercial space per job calculation to get the job capacity. For the town center, this would equate to capacity for four hundred and ninety-three additional jobs under the commercial space studied in the town center FEIS. Under option B, here's what the market factors look like when applied to both residential and commercial capacity in the town center. Here you can see that under the high market factor, there are four hundred and seventy-three jo- or four hundred and seventy-three housing units, then to the low market factor, six hundred and fifty-three units. For jobs, under the high market factor, there are three hundred and seventy jobs and under the low market factor, there are six hundred and thirty-eight jobs. Before we move to discussion, we'd like to switch gears, um, excuse me, with that information to consider, we'd like to switch gears to move to a conversation on growth targets. Recall the two questions we started with. Are the market factors previously selected by the city council still appropriate? Given the changes in land capacity and consideration of regional housing needs, what are the appropriate growth targets for Sumamish? We have included a suggested formula to help the council with this discussion. This includes selecting a growth target for residential units and commercial units by category and then adding them up. There are two important things to note here. The first is that when you pick a market factor for residential, that same market factor will also apply for commercial and in that sense, when you choose a residential market factor, it will automatically autofill what you choose for commercial. This is because the market factor is applied to the land supply, which is then used to calculate housing units and commercial job units. The second is that although we have broken land supply down into categories such as single-family residential and multifamily and mixed-use, this is only to simplify the discussion around where the land supply exists. The city's growth target will be a single number and won't have subcategories. That is, we can't have growth targets specifically assigned to town center or multifamily and mixed-use residential. These won't be divided into thematic categories as we show here. This was done for the purpose of city council conversation. With that to consider, I turn it over to you, Mayor, for council discussion.
Thanks, David. Counsel? Deputy Mayor?
Is there like a, a thing, what was chosen before? Where's that at, sorry? Like to compare, like the, if needed changed?
Oh, you're wanting to see what the market factors were that were previously chosen by the city council?
Yeah, because you said, do we need to change it? Is that the question?
Yep. So, uh, as was previously reported in the past council presentations, uh, the council did choose high market factor for all categories.
Got it. Okay. So, yeah, I would like to see a change.
We'd need a motion then. Counselor Hough?
I was gonna ask a question.
Yeah, please.
Um, actually, uh, when you look at Merrill Gardens, is that housing or commercial?
It depends on what's included with it. So, we have not seen a proposal for Merrill Gardens yet. We do not officially have a proposal for a Merrill Gardens development in the town center. Um, so we at this point in time do not know exactly what they will be including. They could be including some ground-level commercial with some, um, multi-generational housing. Uh, the housing would be considered as housing units. The, uh, commercial would be considered as commercial space.
Okay. Um, having that information would be really helpful, I think, as we start looking at targets, um, to understand just what the impacts are. Um, oh, shoot, I had another question. I'll lower my hand and I'll come back and ask if I remember what it is.
Counselor Lamb?
Hi, David. Thank you for, um, answering all my questions today and of course, I still have the exact same question and maybe you could answer that and maybe there are other people that are watching that also have the same question. And again, this goes back to the town center, that the FEIS says that there's twelve eighty-four units that we could build, buildable or built versus what's in the pipeline. But then, taking a look at the chart with the market factor, we're starting off at seven hundred, I think it was. I don't know if you could go back to that chart? Yes, that no market factor is seven ninety-four and again, needing an explanation why that's not twelve eighty-four or what that number was.
Yeah, so there, it's apples and oranges. Um, the issue there is that that number, seven hundred and ninety-four, um, is based on, uh, minimum density, um, at, or allocated density in our code. It does not include, um, potential, uh, bonus density units, um, and it's based on a, a completely different, um, structure than the FEIS was based on. The FEIS picked a number, two thousand units, and since that number has been chosen, we have been deducting units from that number before a supplemental EIS is required for additional growth. So, that two thousand units was not generated based on a land supply calculation. It was based on a, an environmental analysis related to impacts and alternatives. Um, so, they are not comparable, um, but for the purpose of council discussion, we wanted the council to be aware that the Urban Growth Capacity Study analysis reports based on minimum or allocated density and it does not take into account the fact that you could achieve quite a few more units than what the minimum or allocated density is. Um, however, there is a cap on how many additional units could be achieved in the town center before a supplemental EIS is required. So, the council, we, we wanted you to be aware of that, um, because this number, we feel here, is, is real but somewhat misleading because it doesn't take into account that a developer could achieve more than what the minimum or allocated density is at the town center if they are successful in applying the code properly to, um, achieve bonus density units. That is, they're not outright entitled to those units. They have to do certain things in their project to reach, to successfully be awarded those additional bonus units. So, for King County's purpose of Urban Growth Capacity Study land supply, they, they want us to look at what is guaranteed, what is a guaranteed entitlement, and that is based on minimum density or allocated density, not based on what might possibly be achieved by a developer if they design their project in a certain way to achieve extra units.
Thanks, David. That's, that's helpful.
Counselor Hough?
So, I remembered my question I had to do around, it had to go, to do with jobs. So, I'm assuming that, that tying them together, the commercial housing, that there's still supposed to be some kind of correlation. So, are these, I need, is there any more detail about what these jobs are? And what kind of, you know, are these people that are going to be living in these places or do they already live here now because they're consultants? I'm trying to understand that part.
Yeah, it's a great question and we don't have an answer to that. Um, the jobs would fit within the range of commercial uses allowed by the code. Um, we can't, we, we don't say specifically that it would be, uh, like a retail job. We don't specifically say that it would be, um, an office job. Um, really, it's, it's all about how much commercial space is allowed by, or is available and what are the range of uses that would be allowed in those commercial zones. I see Miriam has popped up with her hand up, so I'll, I'll turn it over to her.
I concur with what David is saying. I would just add, we can say that in the R six zone, we know there's eighty-three jobs that would be produced using this, well, not the three seventy ratio, but a special ratio for schools that the consultant developed, um, and that would be staff of the schools. But we don't have an answer in terms of who's living where and that kind of thing yet.
Right? Or who's being paid what or any of that? Okay. Thank you for that, that detail and explanation. It kind of, it blends a little bit into my second question, which is, as I understand it, it takes about three years, like if everything was perfectly for a developer to get a project off the ground and going. So, it takes time to roll out these projects over time. But if they don't have a certain amount of density, they're not going to do, say, seventy units of, of more affordable housing because they don't have the capacity to do that. Um, is, do we know what that number is? How many housing units do, does a developer need in order to be able to give us, you know, the, the affordable housing componentry that we're looking for? Let's say it were seventy units.
I think it, it varies by project, um, and it has to do with the, the cost of providing affordable units versus the, the value of the, of bonus units that come along with those affordable units. Um, so there's a whole host of factors that go into it, um, and I don't think that, that for any project, there is a, a, or for the town center, there is definitely not a specific formula that you could apply. It's done project by project and it really depends on what amenities and components go into a project, uh, the cost of construction, the land costs, um, how many market rate units they're getting, what type of market rate units those are, how much parking is required, what other type of amenity is required to go along with the project. It's, it, it varies widely.
Because I think another, uh, piece of this that I'd, I'd like the council to consider is that, you know, if we really are serious about trying to find ways to create more of a housing mix or more affordable opportunities for people, what would the, what would, what should we invest? Should we look at an investment as an opportunity for us to, to help reduce the price of land, for example, in order to get those, uh, more affordable housing units in play so that we don't pay just lip service to it, we're actually doing something about it? Has there been any thought of that or is there any talk of that or, or is it just because it's now after ten and people are talking like this?
I would say, sorry to interrupt, um, that I think it's actually a really nice eventual segue to the item that was pulled off of consent because I think our Housing Action Plan Grant will be looking at that in a lot more detail, um, and looking at our existing code and policies to make some recommendations to help address that. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Counselor Tree?
Okay, so, uh, David Pyle, the single residential outside the town center, uh, initially, the council said we thought that was a highest percentage market number because we want, in a sense, we wanted the infill, the development to go in the town center. So, that would be at the highest market, uh, number of one thousand seventy-eight. Yeah, there you go. Okay. And then on the multifamily mixed-use residential outside the town center, um, some people uh, didn't, didn't want that to happen and so there was that idea that it also would be at the high, but just for, um, uh, uh, mathematics, if I go with the medium number saying that, you know, some of it may happen, uh, say in, um, like at the seven eleven or, uh, the Pine Lake Mall, uh, somewhere besides the town center, there's mixed use that took place. So, I go medium at two seventy-four and then if we do the next one, which is the residential's in the town center, we go low. Low market factor, right? Because we want it, we, we want development to happen in the town center. That's six fifty-three. If I add those three numbers together, which is kind of what you asked us to do, I get a, a target of two thousand and five. So, that would be a, a, a growth target number of two thousand and five, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so that, and then, and then if, if we did, so, that's just a, a, a thought because obviously the smallest number, I think, was sixteen, one thousand six ninety-seven. The highest was two thousand three thirty-one. Um, and so I'm just gonna say kind of a middle number's two thousand and five. Hey, how's that? Hey, make it two thousand and ten. Whoo, it's a nice year, um, pre-COVID. Let's not make it two twenty, people. Twenty twenty is off the table. Okay. On the jo- on the jobs thing, it's getting late. Uh, on the jobs thing, um, well, I think we should just stay with, I just look at how long it's gonna take for job, five hundred jobs? Would, could you could, so I guess my question on the jobs one is, can you and Miriam go to, uh, King County Growth Management Planning Council and say that is a number that we can defend and we can, we can show that, yeah, we think the floor is five hundred, that the lease is gonna be five hundred. We may get more jobs than that, but, so do you guys have the, the info? I mean, you put a number on here, but could you really defend that then to the King County Growth Manager Planning? Because I just don't, I don't know where the jobs are gonna come from yet.
So, if you recall, what, one of the things that, that Miriam and I have talked about is the way the Urban Growth Capacity Land Supply Study is structured, that both jobs and residential units are based on the land supply and the land supply is affected by the market factor once. So, the way it progresses is a- as you slowly strip down what's available and you get to the, the final land supply, then you apply the market factor before you calculate the number of residential units and the number of jobs that are available. So, in this case, if you were to choose a medium market factor for, um, multifamily and mixed-use, which would give you two hundred and seventy-four residential, that would provide you two hundred and twenty-eight jobs in that, in those areas. And if you were to choose low market factor for residential in the town center, that would then provide you, um, six hundred and thirty-eight jobs. So, that would, that would be, um...
A thousand eleven.
Eight, eight hundred and sixty-six jobs.
Yeah, eight sixty-six. Six thirty, yeah, eight sixty-six. Six thirty, yeah, eight sixty-six. So we'd be better off just hanging out in the middle range market. If, if, if the count, I mean, personally, I, I think we should stay with the high percentage market factor as, as the floor and push forward. But, okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Howe, before I let you jump in again, I'm, I'm going to take a turn here before we go around to you. So for council, if, I, I'm sure you're aware, but I'll, I'll say it anyway, is that when we land on a target, that is a floor, they're not ceilings, which means you can go over those numbers. So if we overshoot and we don't meet those targets, that's a, a bigger problem than picking a lower target, meeting it, and then potentially exceeding it. The goal is in, in picking a growth target is that you're planning your infrastructure to support what you believe is going to come in. So I am reticent to go with a low market factor and overplan and overspend taxpayer dollars on infrastructure if things don't come in. There are things that are just simply out of our control. We don't know that the entire town center is going to build out in the next twenty years. You know, we've got Russians in Ukraine right now. We have no idea what's going to happen next week. So I think I, my preference is to still stick with the, the, the high market factor that allows us to do some reasonable planning. And as, you know, jurisdiction after jurisdiction has, has shown is that you can go over your target, you just, the goal is not to go under the target. So overshooting, I think, could be troubling. We also don't have, it, it also assumes that the town center partially develops out. And I think that's a reasonable assumption because there are the TCE zones and those are single-family homes right now. And we don't, we can't force them to build or change their zoning. We've had one of those parcels ask to be rezoned, but not all of them. And we don't control people who are living in homes as to whether they want their homes rezoned or not for higher density. But I do have one question as it pertains to jobs and the creation of new jobs. David, does it count if someone decides, I'm going to open a, a small business in Sammamish and I've created, you know, two jobs or four jobs? Does that count towards your job total?
It does.
Great, because we have a lot of home-based businesses here. And I think, you know, the pandemic has certainly shifted the way people do their work. So it is, it is possible that job creation could be had within the walls of our, of our homes.
So I, I see Miriam has her, her hand up and I'll let her add to that. However, I do want to clarify that, that is a point of discussion regionally right now as to how jobs are anchored. And the way I understand it is that currently, King County considers it somewhat in a traditional sense of commercial space. However, there is discussion around how in-home offices are, are, are reported and anchored as, as jobs. Miriam?
Yeah, I was just going to state that for this latest round of Urban Growth Capacity Study, it was based on commercial zones and mixed use zones, and it didn't account for any businesses operated out of homes. I was also going to just clarify that when we're looking at capacity for town center residential, we did not include any of the TCE parcels as being redeveloped just based on the criteria and the definitions that we established.
Perfect. Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're going to go back for round two unless Karen, Councilmember Moran, do you have any comments? You haven't gone yet.
You know, Sammamish has always gone in and we have come in and taken an awful lot of growth for an awful lot of years. And this is the first time that the county's come in and actually worked with us to, you know, give us time to work on our infrastructure. So I, I think that we ought to grab the, the timeframe they've given us and, and work on our infrastructure and, and keep our numbers at a, a reasonable amount and actually try to get our infrastructure under, under control. Get it put in. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Miriam, did you have a secondary?
Sorry, I'm tired. I will lower my.
No, that's okay. We're all getting there. Don't worry. Okay, council, we have about seven minutes before we're going to have to extend here and we will need to extend. So Councilmember Howe.
I'll be fast.
Pardon?
You haven't talked yet?
No.
Okay, then Councilmember Lamb, please.
So I spent an hour talking to David Pyle and Miriam last week just to get a better understanding of what all this meant. And it was really helpful to, just to understand how these numbers, where they come from and what applying these market fact, what market factors are. So from that discussion, I am comfortable with saying or choosing market factor for single-family residential units as medium and multifamily and mixed use as low and the town center as low. And I appreciated hearing from David that, especially in the town center, that because town center is essentially having one developer that development is easier to happen in the town center. I think that, you know, we hear from a lot of residents that, you know, we don't want, we want the character of Sammamish to remain the way it is. And I do believe that keeping that character means that we do move much of that growth toward the town center. So that would be my growth factors.
Okay, Councilmember Howe.
And just very quickly, the reason why I pulled that particular item off the consent calendar was because it mentioned specifically the survey. We're right now throwing darts at a board, saying that this is what we think and we should actually know what we think based on data. And so that, that's the reason why I wanted to take a deeper dive into the surveying aspects to make sure that we're actually doing the right thing at the right time. This is our shot. Let's, let's not screw this up. So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Lamb on what she was talking about, but I want to get that survey done. Right?
So council, to kind of expedite this, we need a motion so that we can give direction to staff and then. Deputy Marya Clark.
I was just going to make a motion for one of the things. Is that helpful instead of all three at the same time?
However, you want to make your motion? I think obviously the jobs target follows for the, as, as David Pyle said. So I don't think you have to pull apart the entire thing.
Okay, I was just going to move for the, for letter A, the single family to be medium market factor.
I second that.
Okay, Deputy Marya Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. I'm not sure I know who was aye and who was nay. So if you can raise your hand for an aye. Okay, and nays?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. We need another motion, council. Councilmember Tree.
So I move to direct the city manager, to rec, to direct the city staff to present the city's revised growth target number at one thousand six ninety-seven residential units and five hundred jobs to the King County Growth Management Planning Council.
Second that.
Can you repeat those numbers again, can, Councilmember Tree?
Yeah, no problem. The residential units, one thousand six ninety-seven and the jobs was five hundred.
Okay, Councilmember Tree, did you want to speak to your motion?
I think we've kind of beat, hey, we should, we need a floor. This creates the floor and we go from there and see what the market, what the market drives. What are, what market factors are actually going to drive it and what are people going to build? Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of three-three, the motion fails. I do have a question for David since we're splitting votes here on this stuff. What happens if council splits all its votes? Do you revert back to previous council direction on market factors or what does staff do?
We would report to,
Uh-oh.
We lost you there. You're muted.
Yep, you weren't muted.
The opposite. We, we would report to the King County Interjurisdictional Team and we would report to the King County Growth Management Planning Council that we were unable to provide a revised growth target and that would be taken under their consideration. I don't know what would happen going forward.
Miriam?
Miriam?
I would just add potentially, having not done this before, that I think there's room in those conversations to give a little background about our approach and the discussion that was had. And so we could present kind of the two points of view of the council and the numbers as where the motions were made on and, and see what they have to say. Because we'll be coming back to you all, I believe, in April or May to give feedback from what we hear from King County so that you guys can decide on what a final target would be. I think one thing to consider when we're deciding kind of what market factor or what number to put forward is that just because we assign a market factor, we say that we're going to have a, a low market factor or a medium factor in, you know, outside the town center and a high market value inside the town center, doesn't make it so. We don't build homes, developers do. And so at the end of the day, the market will drive this, not what we say. So I, I, again, my, my take on this is that if we overshoot on a target that we don't end up meeting because something happens in the world that we have no control over, is that what we're saying is we're informing our own comprehensive plan on our, our housing strategy and our, our transportation element. And picking numbers that are, are larger than what actually gets constructed makes us build things infrastructure-wise that may not be needed. And that is kind of my, my concern in overshooting what might be. The delta between, you know, the, the low and the high is, is not so substantial. But I think to take into consideration, again, that we're not in, in the housing business, right? We process permits and, and, and that, but we don't build homes, developers do. They'll ultimately control it. The zoning controls what they can build. And if they want to come build it, they will. And if they don't want to, because something extraneous in the market is driving them away from building, then they won't. So. Deputy Marya Clark.
Yeah, I just had one other question, kind of similar to that, because you keep talking about like the infrastructure piece. And so I guess my only concern would be if we're like underscoring, are we not building enough infrastructure for future? I don't really understand that correlation.
Oh, David.
So the goal of the growth target setting process is to try to predict the future as much as possible and try to align your twenty-year growth target as closely with what you think might materialize. So it's not really, we try and make it as scientific as possible, but at the end of the day, it's really just an assessment of where we think we're going. And based on information we have, and the, the county tries to set it, set some parameters like market factor. They, they do a really good job giving us guidance on how to calculate land capacity. But once we know the capacity and we know the ranges of, of market factors, they're trying to, to guide us in, in selecting a range of growth targets that fits within the market factors that, that their consultants have set are appropriate for our city. So that's why we present the, the high, medium and low and we present those as bookends and ranges that you could choose from based on what we believe we're facing in the future for the next twenty years. So if, if you think that, for example, in the town center, if you think that, that the town center is not likely to build out over the next twenty years, then, then choosing a, a high market factor would be appropriate. But if you think that because the town center is largely under one ownership and that there is a demand for diversity in housing types and there is a demand for affordable housing, or at least there will be a, a requirement that we provide affordable housing in the future, then we might want to look at what is remaining under the FDIS. Now, it's also important to think about what could happen in twenty years. There, there could be, like, like the, the mayor says, who knows what could happen today, tomorrow, five years, ten years from now, the economy could go completely flat, things could not happen. We've seen that happen before. However, things could keep humming along and we could see pressure for additional housing in the city grow exponentially. So trying to figure out where to land on this one is really difficult. The good news is that we get to redo this again in eight years. So if we don't get it exactly right this time, we have the opportunity to adjust it again in eight years and go through this process all over again.
So council, just a, a, a quick thought and, and maybe I'll spin this into a motion. I think, you know, if we can kind of split the difference here between ourselves, I'd rather us be charting these waters than having the county or GMPC potentially applying their mindset to our jurisdiction. We know our jurisdiction best. And, you know, if it means having a medium market factor for both, you know, outside and inside the town center, I think that would be a better strategy than having King County just say what we're going to plan for, which ultimately drives, you know, how we're going to spend our taxpayer dollars. I'd rather be in that driver's seat. And again, these are, are floors, they're not ceilings. You can overshoot them. But I think I'd prefer to be giving guidance to King County than having the county give us guidance. So I, I guess I'll make that into a motion and say, I, I move that we use both a medium market factor for both inside and outside town center.
I second that.
Okay, I don't think I need to speak to my motion, but is there any further discussion? Councilmember Tree?
Yeah, is this also including then jobs at seven twenty-eight?
Yes, I think the jobs is, comes with it. You can't differentiate them.
Right, so you got two thousand and seven in the, in, as a growth target and seven twenty-eight is the jobs. Actually, I, I, I'm not in support of it. Thank you.
So I'll, I'll say one more thing, which is, again, we, we tried to do the low market factor and that motion failed. And the alternative is that this goes to the county and they apply, or excuse me, we tried a high market value factor and that did not, that failed. And so if we just turn this over to the county, they may apply a low market factor and then we're planning for a lot more jobs, eight hundred and thirty-three. So I, I'm just, I'm just concerned that if we, again, are not doing our own planning.
Medium across the board is crazy.
Sorry, what? I know, but the, the most, the, the motions have failed otherwise.
So just to, just to, to make sure we're on the same page, the medium across the board would result in two thousand seven housing units and seven hundred and twenty-eight jobs.
And that was pretty close to what Councilmember Treeen originally was stating at the opening of the meeting, which was, what do you say? Twenty-ten, two thousand and five, two thousand and ten? This is two thousand and seven, right between those two numbers, Councilmember Treeen? So, okay, if there isn't any more discussion, then, um, all those in favor of using the medium market factor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by most, uh, by a vote of four to, uh, motion passes, so we'll use the medium market factor.
That would be, that would be two thousand and seven housing units and seven hundred and twenty-eight jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to circle back on item six, which is the Contract for Housing and Action Plan. Councilmember Howey pulled this, so I'm going to turn this over to you.
I did, thank you, and I kind of spoke to it actually earlier. It was just my concern over the fact that I wanted to make sure that these, that the survey was done, not like cookie cutter way, but was done very, very thoroughly, not, not just statistically relevant, but getting into intent. Are you, did, did you, are you really going to leave? Or did you move? Did you put your house up for sale? Are you going to stay? Are you going to get a job? What kind of a job? I mean, I want to get to as much detail as we possibly can, because I don't think we know. People talk about where I'm going to stay in my house. Do they? Do they move? Do they move here? Will they move here? It, it's much as possible to get to intent is what I'm trying to drive to. And that's just because I don't know this particular, um, vendor that you've selected. Apparently we've used them before because they list us as a customer. I wanted to make sure that they didn't just make assumptions about us because they're used to working with us. I wanted to get a little deeper. So that was my, that was what I was, why I wanted to talk about that one. I'm okay with it going, you know, for, for working on it, as long as, as long as that can be accommodated.
Yeah, I think, um, we had similar thoughts as we were thinking about the survey as staff. Um, and we'll be refining that once we get the contract underway. Um, I would say we didn't talk about doing a statistically valid survey just because when we did that for community visioning, we got a lot of feedback that our budget wasn't enough to accommodate that. Um, from a lot of firms. And so I think I would want to just talk to the consultant and confirm if the budget that we have would allow us to do a statistically valid survey or if there would need to be some kind of increase, which would have to come from other funds to support that.
Councilmember Treeen?
Would that, Miriam, would that be within the budget then?
I'd have to follow up with the, the, a survey of some sort is in the budget for sure. I think that when you do a statistically valid survey, there's a lot of additional costs that go along with that because of the sample sizes that you're trying to reach. Um, so I would just need to follow up with the consultant and figure out if the budget is enough to support that or if we would need additional funds and if so, how much.
And you would then come back to the council and ask for those additional funds?
That's most likely the case, yeah. And you could first look in our, in our budget to see if there were any items that could shift to supplement those costs. But, um, I know our budget is tight, so it's likely we might come back and ask for more funds.
That's fine.
I think we need to extend our meeting.
I move to extend to eleven.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, the other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five-one, we will extend to eleven. Sorry to cut you off.
It's okay. So I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Community Attributes Inc. to complete the housing action plan in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And if, uh, uh, additional funds are necessary, staff would come back and ask for that money.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six-zero, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, next item is, um, a request for support for the King County Puget Sound Energy Twenty-Twenty-One Clean Energy Implementation Plan Letter. Not sure which.
This is a Department of Community Development, uh, issue again, and I will be waiting for, uh, Sarah Astiri, uh, management analyst, to be promoted. Uh, she's been waiting in the, in the wing here and hopefully she'll be here in a second, just takes a minute.
Good evening, council. Um, my name is Sarah Astiri. I'm management analyst with the CD, and I'm here tonight. Oh, give me one second, I want to share my screen. I totally forgot. Can you see the presentation? Perfect. Okay. Oh. Uh, I'm here tonight to present the Puget Sound Energy Twenty-Twenty-One Clean Energy Implementation Plan and Twenty-Twenty-One Energy Code Amendment Letter of Support. Before we start, uh, I would like to provide a little background information about K-FOR-C. Uh, King County and its seventeen co- partners are working together to directly respond to climate change and reduce global and local sources of climate pollution. All this effort is through the King County Cities of Climate Change, uh, secret, sorry, uh, King County's Climate Collaboration, or K-FOR-C. And I'm here tonight as a staff liaison for the K-FOR-C. The C-E-I-P, or Clean Energy Implementation Plan, is a four-year roadmap that will guide Puget Sound Energy's clean energy investments for the years of twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five. The Puget Sound Energy Implementation Plan Letter, which you could find in exhibit number one, is providing comment on behalf of K-FOR-C elected officials to the Utilities and Transportation Committee, UTC. This letter writes the following issues. The first point, encourage PSC to move more rapidly to transition to clean energy supplies. PSC should increase the development and acquisition of energy generation resources in early years in order to rapidly decrease its reliance on fi- fossil fuel generations. Lastly, PSC should ensure that the C-I-P sets the foundation for successful compliance with the Clean Energy Transformation Act requirement for eighty percent clean energy by twenty-thirty and hundred percent clean electricity by twenty-forty-five. Council can make a motion tonight to authorize either the, the mayor or the city manager to sign the letter on behalf of the CD. Please note that in the agenda bill, uh, the letter is due to King County at eleven AM tomorrow. However, this time has been changed to ten AM tomorrow. Um, also, there's another option. City council members can provide their individual testimony by emailing the addresses on the screen or calling the phone number you could see on the screen. Uh, but please again, consider the deadline is tomorrow, uh, by the end of the day, if you would like to provide your testimony. You could also find this information, uh, in the agenda bill. Uh, let's talk about the second item on the agenda, which is.
Can I, can I interrupt you for a second? I think that we need to, uh, share your screen. Um, it looks like we're getting the notes screen here.
Oh, no.
Don't want, sorry to interrupt you. Um, it looks like, sometimes when you're using.
You can see all my notes right now.
That's fine.
I don't know what happened. Let me share again. Um. Okay. Do you see my notes again?
Yes, I think that, um, sometimes if you, if you hit, if you hit minimize that right there.
Yeah, give me one second.
You're up in the upper right corner. Sometimes if you minimize the notes screen, depends which, do you have two screens or one?
I have two screens, that's why it happened. Normally I use one screen, but today I was, I wanted to be super professional. I used two screens. That's why it happened. Um, it's a little late. Oh, that's what, okay.
So usually, usually what I do is, yeah, there, oh, there we go, that's one screen.
Okay, and I do this.
You can just do it that way, there we go, perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. You saw all my notes. Okay, perfect. Uh, let's talk about, uh, the second item on the agenda. The Washington State Building Code Council is currently reviewing the proposed amendment to the commercial portion of the Twenty-Twenty-One Washington Energy Code, which will be, uh, which will be available for local for adoption by July twenty-twenty-three. Many of these proposed amendments focuses on eliminating, eliminating or reducing the use of natural gas fuel resources in building and, uh, move, in buildings and multifamily buildings greater than forest stories. These amendments are also similar to what has been adopted by Shoreline. Bellingham and King County is also considering adopting those. Council can make a motion tonight to authorize either the mayor or the city manager to sign the letter on the behalf of the CD. Please note that the deadline to sign the letter is March ninth. Instead, if city council members, um, would like to, uh, provide their individual testimony, they could use, um, the link below, uh, the addresses that you could see on this screen. Um, and also the third option would be that the council members can provide their verbal testimony by signing up using the link provided on the screen. Uh, each council member will have two minutes to provide their, uh, comments. And if you need any assistance to fill out the forms, please, uh, feel free to reach out to me, I'm happy to help. Uh, this information also is available on the agenda bill, in the agenda bill. And if you have any questions, um, please let me know. Thank you for your time and sorry about the sharing the wrong screen. Um, and with that, I will hand it over to mayor to open the discussion. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Sarah. Council, are there questions about this? All right, then. Deputy Mayor Clark?
Um, I moved that the city of Smamish endorses the PSC Twenty-Twenty-One Clean Energy Implementation Plan Letter and the Twenty-Twenty-One Energy Code Amendment Letter as presented by King County.
I second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
No.
I will say a few words. I am not in support of this. Um, and I, I did speak with David Hoffman. He's basically the government liaison between Puget Sound Energy and, and government agencies today. Um, he called me tonight. And I just, I essentially asked him a few questions about, you know, what does this mean? Um, so I think we didn't, we got a little bit of the background, um, in Sarah's presentation, which is the Clean E- Energy Transformation Act. It is RCW, um, nineteen dot four oh five. And every e- energy company in Washington State has to follow this, there are mandated timelines. Um, so they are going to have to meet basically the criteria that are in this letter. Anyway, the letter essentially is telling PSC, please do it faster. So my questions for David Hoffman were, please let, uh, help me understand, what does it mean if we meet these deadlines faster than what the RCWs are dictating that you have to? And the, the long and short of it is there is an implication to the consumers of energy from Puget Sound customers if they move faster. He said, we're all going to pay more anyway to do this, but to expedite the timeline will only exacerbate how much customers have to pay. But I do want to give you some of the information as to what PSC has already done. So far, PSC has already invested three point two billion dollars in smart grid technology. They have yet to recoup any of those investments in their rates. So there are rate hikes likely on the horizon, um, to recoup that. Um, smart grid, um, includes some of the new meters that they have rolled out. These are two-way communicative, um, and enables demand response programs in the future. Um, so, you know, not everything is related to, um, customers and their billing. Um, PSC's had issues relative to permitting. Um, he cited an issue specific to, in, in Redmond, you know, they're having trouble getting easements. These are all costs associated with moving towards, um, their, um, betterment of and, and moving away from coal-fired energy, um, but it takes time. And they're not always in control of that timeline when there's permitting agencies that they have to go through. Um, they do plan to shut down the coal plants, plants in Montana and Centralia, and that will be done by twenty-twenty-five. And at the beginning of twenty-twenty-six, PSC will be sixty-seven percent clean, which is, he said, is a substantial jump in just a few years for PSC. So Puget Sound Energy is making strides in providing that clean energy. And again, um, Washington State law provides that they have to, they have to meet certain timelines. Um, and the, the long and short of it is even if we sign onto this letter, PSC's probably not in a position to be able to meet these any sooner than they have to. They have their goals, they know what they have to meet, they will meet them. It's just that they probably won't be able to prematurely.
Councilmember Lamb?
So on Monday, the UN, um, climate report that came out shows that we are already past our tipping point and PSC needs to move a little bit, um, faster. I mean, that's, there's no, I don't think that there's any debate about that. Um, their renewables currently is only at thirty percent, which means they're using sixty percent fossil fuels. And they need to move faster. So I believe this letter needs to be signed and they need to move faster.
Councilmember Moran? Oh, you're on mute, Karen.
So, um, I'm not going to repeat this stuff from, um, David Hoffman. I also spoke with him, but I also spoke with a guy who lives in our neighborhood who also works for PSC. And, and, um, he said a lot of the same stuff that David Hoffman did. Um, apparently they've got a, uh, something in East Montana that's coming out, a, a wind farm that's coming on that's going to be bringing out, bringing a lot of relief to the, the system as well. But, um, they also said that they just literally just turned in a plan that was just signed off by the county. And so this was, kind of to see this letter was kind, I mean, they literally, the county just signed off on the plan of, of how this whole thing was supposed to be, you know, rolling out and how they just approved how this whole thing was supposed to work over the next some odd years. So he was, this was kind of a surprise. Um, so I'm not going to be supporting this only because I feel like, you know, they're, they're moving in the right direction and somebody's going to pay this price. And it's going to get pushed down to the consumer. And though you may be able to pay it, and I may be able to pay it, not everybody's going to be able to pay this. So I will not be supporting it.
Councilmember Lamb?
I think that we need to do a better job in supporting the environment and not be supporting, um, a company that is using fossil fuels and leading and, and contributing more to, um, climate change. I mean, if everybody needs to do their part, and if that means we need to pay a little bit more money, then we need to pay a little bit more, you know, we need to make some sacrifices here.
Councilmember Treeen? Oh, you're on mute.
So I don't know what the, oh, David, there you are. Okay, uh, hi. Um, so i- if we send these letters and we support these, uh, positions, as I read it, then, uh, there is a cost factor. And it, it does, would it require us then to pass policies that would make it so that housing would be even more expensive and therefore less affordable?
So my understanding is that King County is sending the letters regardless and that they are looking for support from members of the K-FOR-C group, uh, which Sarah represents at the staff level for the city. Um, and that they have asked us to take this to our elected officials and ask if there is support in sending those letters. Um, se- signing on and supporting these efforts does not necessarily mean that, um, the codes will be changed in that manner. the codes will be changed in that manner that is suggested by King County, nor does it mean that the PSC will speed up its conversion to more of a non-carbon-based energy source, sustainable energy source. So it really is just supporting King County's position.
All right. Thanks, David.
Sure.
Call for the question unless there's.
Yeah, there's still another hand up and I had one more comment. Councilmember Moran, did you have another comment or? No, okay. So I did want to make just a little bit more. And Councilmember Liam, I appreciate your comments and the desire to do something. It isn't, my comments are not strictly based on costs to PSC consumers, but in reading the RCWs and doing a little bit more digging, by 2025, all electric utilities must eliminate coal-fired generation serving Washington State consumers. By 2030, all electric utilities must be greenhouse gas neutral. And by 2045, all electric utilities must generate a hundred percent of their power from renewable or zero-carbon resources. So the law will dictate that all of these Washington energy companies will have to become much better for the environment. However, my understanding in talking to PSC specifically is that this letter is not going to pivot them. So it really just kind of becomes political theater to sign onto a letter that won't shift the end result, which is PSC has a roadmap. They're trying to follow it. And the reality is, is that the law is going to force them to meet certain deadlines to be carbon neutral, right? They're going to move away from these energy sources that are not beneficial for our environment. So they are moving and as are all energy companies because the law is dictating that they have to. But I think in order to try and jumpstart that would be costs that they are not prepared to invest in considering their investments that they've been doing already. So if there aren't any more comments, then I think we shall vote on the motion. So all those in favor of signing onto this draft letter, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Council still reserves the right, as was pointed out. You can call in. You cannot use, you know, the city of Sammish behind you, but individuals certainly retain the right to call in and provide comment. So encourage those of you that feel passionately about it to do that. Our next item is city lobbyists, and this is on House Bill 1660.
Hey, Christie, it's eleven o'clock, so you have to either extend or we have to take.
Yep. We need a motion to extend. Got a few more items to contend with.
Just wanted to mention, there would be another item under my agenda, which was Clean Energy Code Amendment, which was the second letter.
The motion was for, on both of them.
On both of them, okay.
Yeah, the motion was on both of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
So Mike Sugg, we've got Mike who's going to rule us through House Bill 1660.
Shall I move that we extend for fifteen minutes? Is that enough time?
I don't know if it's enough time. Go for a half an hour because we can always adjourn before then.
I move that we extend to thirty minutes.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to extend to 11:30, 11:32 actually, because you said thirty minutes. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four-two, we will extend to 11:32. Okay, all right, sorry, Mike Sugg.
Great, thank you. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. We also have David Pyle here, Director of Community Development, to help with any technical questions that might arise from this discussion. And tonight, we are here to provide a quick update on legislation related to accessory dwelling units. This is House Bill 1660. I understand it's late, so I'll try to move quickly through my notes here. And then following my overview, we will open it up for discussion on whether the council wants to take a position on this bill or provide any direction to the city's lobbyists. So on Friday, council received an email from our lobbyists Luke Esser and Nick Federici about an action alert that was sent out by AWC requesting that cities oppose House Bill 1660, which, as we know, is a bill that would create new mandates related to ADUs for all cities across the state. The full text of the bill and some of Luke's commentary was included in tonight's Agenda Bill. And within that, there was some discussion of a few controversial provisions of the bill. The first of those is that it would require that cities allow two ADUs on every single-family lot over forty-five hundred square feet. As a reminder, the city currently allows one ADU on these lots. The second is that the bill would allow detached ADUs to be sold separately from the primary residence. So you could have an owner of the primary dwelling unit and a different owner of the ADU, which is not currently allowed under city code. And the third is that the bill would prohibit cities from requiring off-street parking for ADUs. And city code currently requires parking for ADUs in some, but not all situations. So this Friday is the deadline for House bills to pass out of the Senate. So there's very limited time to effect change. In fact, AWC recommended that cities communicate with their senators by today. So it is quite time-sensitive. AWC is encouraging cities to oppose the bill in its entirety, or they say if our senators are not willing to oppose the entire bill, that we should ask them to support the removal of the section that mandates three homes per large residential lot, essentially two ADUs plus the primary residence. Given the pace with which things are moving, we wanted to provide this opportunity to discuss whether there is consensus around any feedback related to this bill. If there is, we can provide the city's position to our lobbyists, who will then convey that to our senators, who are considering the bill right now. If the council is not prepared to take a position tonight, or there's not consensus, that is okay as well because we do still have AWC that is advocating on all cities' behalf. And with that brief introduction, I will turn it over to the mayor for any discussion or position that the council might like to write to our lobbyists.
Councilmember Moran, excuse me. Oh, good, my microphone's off for a change. Okay, so, you know, it's unfortunate what they've done with this because, you know, we actually support ADUs. And so to see what they've done with this is really, I was upset when I read it because, you know, here we support ADUs of the city, but to see what they're doing. I do, I do want to get back to them and personally, I don't support what they're doing. But yet I do support ADUs. So, you know, I do think we, there's got to be that happy medium because I don't want to say we don't support ADUs. We do. But what they're, what they're saying is just, they're all of a sudden taking away, they're trying to separate property rights and something that we've just never done before. And that's just, that just creates a whole new obstacle for us.
Councilmember Howe.
I like the recommendation that you made, Mike, about maybe separating out that one component, the up to, is it two ADUs and the primary residence on forty-eight hundred square feet or something like that?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. I would support that, that change. I am uncomfortable about dual owners of a piece of property. It makes me nervous. So I'm not tickled pink about that. But if they make a recommendation that, you know, for the two ADUs, I'd go with that.
So I don't see more hands up, so I'll make a few comments. I am supportive of joining with AWC in opposing the bill wholesale. I think this is more of a legislature doing a one-size-fits-all and really circumventing local control. We truly know our own city best. And, you know, the thought that, you know, one ADU, let alone two, could fit on a forty-five hundred square foot lot when we, you know, presumably have lots that have five, seven, and fifteen setbacks. I don't know where you're going to put that ADU. Maybe in the driveway, but they just, it simply won't fit here relative to the parking requirement. I think that that is short-sighted as well, especially in a jurisdiction like Sammish that could work maybe in someplace that has a lot of transit. We don't have a lot of transit here. Somebody who's going to be in an ADU is going to have a car. You need a place to put that car. And I think there are a host of unintended consequences when you start having multiple owners, one of an ADU and one of the main structure. So I am supportive of opposing the bill wholesale. And to that end, I'll make that into a motion that we join with AWC in opposing House Bill 1660. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I don't feel like I need to speak to my motion. I already spoke to it. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Deputy Mayor Clark, we and I, sorry. Okay, so by a vote of six-zero, we will support AWC's position and opposition of House Bill 1660.
Great, thank you, council. We will make sure to convey this feedback to our lobbyists and get that over to our senators as soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a few minutes left here, council, and we do have council reports to go through. I did not submit a report, but I had two meetings today, which is why it wasn't in the packet. I do have it written up and I was going to submit it for next week. But just as an aside, Riot Eight had a committee meeting. It's not the Riot Eight itself. I have a few screenshots from that. And then we had the North End Mayor's meeting today. And you can bet that House Bill 1660 was discussed there. Everyone was pretty much staunchly in opposition of that bill. But again, I'll provide other bullet points. Does anyone else have a council report? Deputy Mayor Clark.
Yeah, I sent an email just before to city council. The Sound Cities Association has two vacancies on their equity and inclusion cabinet, and I would like to apply. But of course, I want to offer it up if anyone else would like to as well, so. But if not, I would probably move forward with that this week.
Yeah, I see a lot of heads nodding. I think that would be great, Deputy Mayor. Good. Anyone else have a council report? Deputy Mayor, or excuse me, Councilmember Howe.
Very briefly, I did have my JRC orientation meeting. We will be voting in March about who's going to be running it. It'll probably be the same people. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. That will be a vote in March.
Great.
And Mayor, if the council finishes up, I've got a brief issue I wanted to share with the city.
Sure. Council, anybody else have a report or no? Nope, okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Many communities and cities are showing their solidarity with Ukraine and hoping for peace and to end the invasion of a sovereign and democratic country. I asked staff to check into some options that maybe the council might want to consider in showing solidarity. You know, there's always banners or flags. But we were looking at the lighting. Staff has been able to acquire some LED lighting that would allow us to change colors for other events too. So they haven't been able to test it out yet. And they might be able to do that, but this Thursday and Friday, they're just stressed, stretched very thin. But if the council is supportive of that, we could put it out as a pilot. Council could take a look at it and/or move forward. So I just need your direction because this is a political issue, not an operational issue. And we've looked at types of coverings to go on the lights, and they say because they're commercial, they get very warm. So plastic coverings aren't going to work, but the LED would be cooler and they were able to get some of the blue and gold lights. So just looking for some direction, a yes or no, or we want to think about it.
I'm certainly supportive. See thumbs up and head nods?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, then I'll move forward with staff and we'll light up City Hall and see how that works. And maybe we can do the comments too. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all we've got, council, so it entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. I assume there's no discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six-zero, we are adjourned. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.